Good evening. Welcome to all of you who are here with us tonight for the Pitt County Board of Commissioners meeting and those of you who are out in your homes watching TV. Let's have our roll call, please.
Is Mr. Smith coming?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am.
If the board could excuse Commissioner Smith, he's actually out of the country.
Motion to excuse.
Second.
Okay, let's vote on that, please. Okay. Thank you. We will now have our invocation and pledge, Mr. Garrison and Dr. Johnson.
Let's all stand, please, and pray. Father, we thank you this evening for your many blessings upon us. We thank you once again for the opportunity of coming together as a community. We pray, Father, that you might bless each one that is here with us this evening. Bless us as a board, guide and direct us, Father, and help us to make those decisions that will best represent the citizens that we represent. And we just pray that everything that is said and done might be done to glorify you. These are blessings we pray in your name. Amen.
And the space flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Let's vote on the agenda, please.
Madam Chairman, there was some discussion of adding an item for the GPAC discussion.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Commissioner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We'd like to add the funding of GPAC to the agenda, please.
Okay, under decision.
So moved. Yes, sir.
Okay. Let's vote on that if there's no discussion.
And for the record, may we take Mr. Hammond as a second?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, our next items of business are public hearings. Ms. Clayton, are you here? Okay, you've been busy tonight.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. The first public hearing that I have is for the Rural Operating Assistance Program from 2011-2012. This grant was sent in prior to the funding being suspended. Funding has since been restored, but we still need to hold the public hearing even though the fiscal year is now over. We received $223,896 in Rural Operating Assistance Program funding for the fiscal year 2011-2012. I need a public hearing held and a motion that the county manager be the authorized official to sign on.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone signed up to speak to this?
No, ma'am.
Is there anyone who's here who didn't have an opportunity to sign up to speak to this? Okay, then I'll close the public hearing. Any commissioners have a comment or a question? Or a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
If there's no discussion, we'll vote, please. Okay, that passes, Ms. Clayton.
Thank you. The second public hearing is for the Rural Operating Assistance Program grant funding, which runs from July 1st of 2012 to June 30th of 2013. I need a public hearing and I also need a motion that the county manager be the approved certifying official for this grant.
Okay, we'll include that in the motion when we make it. I declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone here to speak to this? Okay, then I'll declare the public hearing closed. Any of the commissioners questions, comments?
Motion to approve.
I'd like to...
And would you just...
A lot of other questions.
Okay, just one minute. And would you include in the motion that the county manager... Say it again, just Clayton.
That the county manager be the authorizing official for the...
Okay, be the authorized official.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, is there a second to that motion? Okay, it's seconded. Okay, now, Mr. James.
All right, this money that the county has not... Does not have to put any of this money in. Is that correct?
On these programs, I believe there's a 10 percent capital...
There is a 10 percent match, but that comes through fairs. There is no county match for this money.
So we don't have to go to Iowa?
No, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Let's vote, please, on the motion. Okay, that passes. Thank you. Thank you. You're welcome. Mr. Rhodes. Donna Spence rezoning?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. We have two zoning-related public hearings tonight. The first is a rezoning request for Donna Spence. I'll give you a short staff presentation. This is to rezone not quite an acre of land located on Roosevelt-Spain Road from rural agricultural to rural residential. And the land use plan designates this particular site as rural residential slash agricultural. And on the screen right now, you can see as part of our land use survey, the area bounded in yellow is the one-acre tract or almost-acre tract that's being considered for rezoning. The tan color actually denotes residential use, so it's currently in residential use, single-family residential. This map also shows our current zoning categories, and this is important because the light green, which is just across the road from this particular site, is the rural residential that is being requested. And what it currently is zoned as is in as is rural agricultural, and that's the dark green. So it will be similarly matched to the opposite side of the road if the rezoning passes tonight. As I mentioned, the Conference of Land Use Plan designates the area as rural residential slash agricultural. And the difference here, rural residential slash agriculture is very low-density residential and some agricultural uses as its name. The particular district being intended to be rezoned as is rural residential. Again, low-density, primarily single-residential uses, single-family residential uses and their associated uses. We have looked at this as staff, and we believe that it is appropriate as per the zoning ordinance and its guidelines. And similarly, the planning board reviewed this request at its May 16th meeting and also recommends approval. With that, we're recommending approval for tonight, and that's also after the public hearings held tonight.
Okay. I declare the public hearing open. We don't have anyone signed up, but did anyone come in late that didn't get a chance to sign up for this? Okay, then I'll declare the public hearing closed. And I'll entertain a motion or comments or questions. Yes, Mr. James.
What goes on with this property?
Again, it is, at this point in time, Mr. James, it's not like a conditional use permit. We're not really asking the type of use. It will be rezoned rural residential if that's what your desire is tonight, but the intent would be very similar to what's already there in place. The primary issue or the primary difference here is the lot size requirements.
Well, why can't... Is it going to be like the Old River Road was that time when we turned it down, when they would bring people in from outside the area?
We have heard no opposition to this.
Why don't we know what is going to be there then?
Typically, at this time during a regular rezoning, again, not asking about a special use permit or a conditional use permit, any of the uses that are allowed in rural residential, which are primarily residential uses, can go on this particular lot. It's actually more restrictive than the rural agricultural use.
I know we have a lot of people that live on Roosevelt-Spain Road, right there at the crossroads. Go down there on the right-hand side, Ricky Gray and a bunch of them. And I want to be very careful that we don't open it up. We want to know if we approve it tonight. And we don't know if we find out what is going to be there. Can we change?
If it's allowable use in rural residential, you cannot change that. If it's an allowable use, and again, this particular zoning district that you're moving into is more restricted than what it's currently zoned as. So if anything, you're more limiting what can go on this property by rezoning it this way, which is somewhat odd. And it gets down to the minimum lot size requirement. It's the driving force here, not necessarily the land use.
Can we ask this person any questions pertaining to...
You're welcome to ask them, but again, in a situation like this, and I'll defer to our attorney, typically in a rezoning stage, you're looking at, is this an appropriate location for this type of zoning category, not the specific type of uses going in there.
What I'm concerned with, and the reason I went for planning zoning, is to protect the individual rights of those homeowners. And I don't want us to go here, put something there that would cause these people for their homes to be lower in value. Do you know where I'm coming from, James?
Yes, sir, and that's why I keep mentioning is that this is more restrictive and probably is going to provide better protection for those residential uses out there.
You scared me.
The rural agricultural, Commissioner James, like our planning director, Mr. James, is saying here allows a larger number of uses. By rezoning it down to rural residential, it's a lesser number of uses that are more restrictive. So actually...
But Mr. Manager, it only takes one thing there that can upset the apple cart, so to speak.
Hopefully, within your list of permitted uses within the rural agricultural district, most of the people in there would be in agreement to that list.
And again, people have been notified, the adjacent property owners, there's been notification out there on site. We have heard no opposition to this.
Well, they don't know what's going there, so how can you oppose it? I'm not even finding out what's going there. How can I oppose?
And again, Mr. James, a lot of... If you keep it in its current zoning category, a lot of other uses can go in there other than what is allowed in the rural residential, which is the request for tonight.
One example of a use would be on the, as it is currently, as rural residential, they couldn't subdivide the lot, but as rural agricultural... No, the other way around. As rural agricultural, they couldn't subdivide the lot, but as rural residential, they can subdivide the lot, correct?
You can subdivide both, but again, the minimum lot size is smaller with rural residential.
So that would be one opportunity that would be afforded them by rezoning the piece of property.
Who owns the property that... That now, I know the bullets that own the property up there to the corner.
The particular piece we're looking at tonight is Donna Spence's property.
Who does she buy it from?
That I don't know.
Cliff, you know? Yes. Yes.
I'm Donna.
All right. Can I ask you then?
Yes, sir.
All right. Because I'm very familiar with all of that era, believe it or not.
Donna, if you will identify yourself, please, and tell us where you live.
Okay, I'm Donna Spence, and I live at 1356 Roosevelt-Spain Road. 1356 Roosevelt-Spain Road.
How long you been living there?
About a year and a half.
Not long, all right. That I know the bullets...
I purchased it from Mr. Whitley.
Whitley?
Yes, sir.
I know him very well.
Okay.
Yeah, he's got a small... That's a small place.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. But the bullets on the land from there back to...
Yes, sir. That is correct.
Do you have a question for Ms. Spence?
Well, would you tell me what you... I can't ask you...
You don't have to.
That's what I'm very much concerned. I'm concerned about those people that have worked hard on their homes, and you know that, all up and down there, the bales and so forth. Will it... What you're going to put there cause them to have a harder time of selling that home?
No, sir.
Mr.... I'm sorry, Madam Chair, may I, before she provides that answer, just for purposes of the board, while there's nothing inappropriate with you asking the question and with her answering that question, if she chooses to answer that question, the law tells us that her particular answer to that question can't be the basis for your decision to rezon. Although you can consider it, it can't be the primary basis. And the reason I tell you that is because that rezoning will run with this land, whether she owns it or not, whether she follows through with it or not. She could tell you that she's going to plan one thing, she could actually start to do that, the property could sell. Any permitted use under rural residential will be appropriate. So if you're concerned about that, consider the worst possible use under rural residential, and you'd need to consider that that would be going on to that lot. And that's the reason why the law tells you that what her particular plans are are not relevant to the determination of rezoning.
Then what is the worst scenario?
Well, and worse is subjective. James can tell you what's within that rural residential category. It's very similar to what's currently there with the different buffers and requirements.
Yeah.
And he can tell you. In other words, if you were to rezon, not... You're not in this case, but if you were to rezon to general commercial, it doesn't matter what commercial enterprise is going to happen there, you would have to consider any commercial enterprise. And here, not her residential use, but any residential use by any owner, so that you can't bind her in a general rezoning to what she's telling you tonight.
Well, I want to work with her if it's... I'm not against her, but I'm against her if she's going to lower the value of these homes and cost that. James?
In the zoning ordinance, again, we have a use table, long list, long laundry list of different uses, but just as a couple of examples, again, in the rural agricultural area, the way the property is currently zoned, you're going to have some of those uses that you would expect in a much rural area, more rural area. Just as an example, we've got a couple of things, such as a shooting range with a special use permit in rural agricultural. In that district, you could, if the board agreed, put in a shooting range. Similarly, there's some other uses in here. Mining operation. You'll hear about one of those in just a few minutes. More rural, an area that wouldn't necessarily, or land use that wouldn't necessarily be appropriate right in the middle of a highly residential area. So those are the type things, again, you're going from a broader use of land uses to a more narrow with rural residential.
All right, so, but James, you all approved this, is that correct?
The planning board has reviewed it as well, staff has reviewed it, and we believe it's appropriate for that area.
But you don't know what it is.
Don't know what it is? I know what Ms. Spence has said that it's going to be, and again, we can't, we cannot...
And it would be all right. I feel like she's honest with me, too.
Very good.
I hope so.
Is that it, Mr. James?
Okay. I'll agree with it.
Commissioner Johnson, you had your hand up? Yes, I didn't quite understand from what Mr. Rhodes said. This change would be more restrictive than it currently exists.
More restrictive in the... As far as the number of uses or the allowable uses, there is a smaller list, a shorter list of uses that would be allowed in rural residential, what's being requested tonight versus the current zoning category. So in effect, it's more restrictive in that light.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Webb?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Mr. Rhodes answered my questions.
Okay. Oh, still, is the public hearing still open? Okay, I thought it wasn't. Do we have anyone else to speak to this? Okay, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Any questions, comments?
Motion to approve.
Okay, we've got a motion to approve and a second if we'll vote. Okay, it passes. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Spence. Okay, and Mr. Rhodes, you're on again.
Okay, moving right into the next category. Again, Mr. James, this is specifically for a mining operation, so this is a conditional use permit, and you can ask every question about that particular use on this particular piece of property. So we will go through a few preliminaries, and then this particular one will also need to swear in any of the folks that wish to speak tonight. Again, conditional use permit, this goes through a quasi-judicial procedure, and as you are familiar with this, any decisions from this body tonight would be appealed if necessary to Superior Court. Just some reminders. The information tonight that's gathered is primarily to establish facts. Folks that are presenting here tonight will be placed under oath. Detailed record will be required as far as part of this proceeding. Written findings of fact are required about this particular case. And again, any of the decisions tonight would be appealed to Superior Court. With that, I think we have a list of people that have requested to speak on this tonight, so I'll turn that over to the clerk to swear the people in tonight.
Okay, those of you who signed up to speak... Excuse me. To this item, I think we have 10 people down. Whether you're going to speak or not, if you think you're going to speak, you still have to come up and get sworn in. So if you'll all come forward, those of you who plan to speak, and get sworn in, please.
If you didn't sign up on the list, you think you might speak, you need to come forward as well.
Yeah, if you think you might speak, you just need to come forward and be sworn in. And if you'll come around that way, as long as you can reach in with your left hand, just kind of stand sideways. Thank you. And Mr. Rhodes?
Madam Chair, I'll go through a brief... Well, this isn't really brief because it's got a lot of detail with this particular type of permit, but we'll provide a staff report first. This is a conditional use permit to operate a sand and gravel mine on parcel 37693. This is located at the intersection of NC 222 and State Road 1401, which is Old River Road, very close to the Bellville Crossroads. Land use plan recognizes this area as agricultural, open and natural resource within that category. The site is also adjacent to an existing sand mine, actually, that was approved by this board back in 2004. This is the site that we'll be looking at tonight. Again, the intersection right here at the top of the screen is the intersection of Old River Road and NC 222. The Bellville Crossroads would be up and to the right of the screen. The parcel that's being considered is bounded in red. Also of importance is the Tar River that creates the southwestern property line. Associated with that is the floodway area, and again, different than the 100-year floodplain. Almost the entire tract is within the 100-year floodplain. This area is the area that is most impacted during the height of a 100-year flood, and typically, no types of development go in here, except for some types of uses such as this, where you're actually excavating material out. You're not causing the elevation of the land to rise and therefore have an impact on the flooding event. Wetlands are also associated with this area. Appropriate permits will be required from the federal government. We also, again, speaking of the 100-year floodplain, the area here shown in blue is a buyout property, hazard mitigation grant program property that the county acquired back after Hurricane Floyd. That is adjacent to this site, and you can see it's been cut out. County currently owns that tract. There's also a cemetery on this tract as well. Some other identifiable features that come along with the development of this tract would be the plant slash processing area, and that's located, again, here's 222, heading toward the bridge across the Tar River. The site would be located right here on 222. There would be a berm required for screening purposes. The actual mining areas are shown in the salmon color, and you can see right at the intersection of NC 222 and Old River Road, that open area is one of the mining areas. Area just behind that property that the county owns, another area. There are areas also located within the floodway that are proposed to be mined. This is our current zoning district, and as I've mentioned previously, this is in rural agricultural. Sand mines are allowed within this area provided that a conditional use permit is acquired. This is our current land use, and you can see the area on the opposite side of NC 222, here's the line here. The area in gray is the current mining operation. The areas in tan are some residential properties on the opposite side of 222, as well as this corner on Old River Road and Stokes Road, also residential right here. The area here is the cemetery that I mentioned before. Within our zoning ordinance, we do have specific requirements concerning sand mines. Number one, a minimum of 100-foot setback or separation between the property that's being used for the mine and any adjacent properties. If any blasting occurs as part of this, and typically for sand mines, there wouldn't be, as opposed to what you might see over at the Fountain Community with that type of rock or gravel-type mining operation. Here, hours of operation should not apply since blasting won't be involved. There are screening requirements, and we'll show those in just a minute. And of course, as always, a mining permit must also be obtained from the state. And I like, in most cases, and I've had some discussions with some of the adjacent property owners as far as the closure of the mine whenever that occurs, that is per the state permit, not the county zoning permit. Specific requirements there. There are several criteria that the board needs to consider with this request, and I'll run through those. Will the... Will this property or will this proposed use materially endanger the public health or safety? From staff's perspective, being that it's screened, being some of the buffering and screening that we've got there on the proposed site, we feel like it will not materially endanger public health or safety. Will it injure the value of adjoining or abutting properties? Again, we have an adjacent operating sand mine. We've got some other areas in around here that are primarily agricultural in nature. There are a few scattered residential areas, but all in all, we do not feel like it will substantially injure the value of the properties. Is it in harmony? Again, adjacent to this tract, is an active mining operation. We feel like it will continue to be in harmony with that area. Is it in conformity with the existing plans of the county? We believe that it is. So with that, the staff's recommendation is, number one, to acknowledge that the permit application is complete and is... Does meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance, and also approve the conditional use permit subject to the development standards that I've been through with some additional requirements. Number one, in lieu of the 100-foot separation, we're recommending, and we've met with the developers or the applicants of this particular land use, and they've agreed to a 200-foot separation adjacent to the residential properties, specifically to Lonnie and Teresa Brown. And that is going to extend all the way back from, and I'll show you a map in just a minute, extend all the way back from Old River Road back to the cemetery. Also, we're asking for additional information about the processing area. And again, the changes primarily, as per the ordinance right now, only 100-foot separations required. We've agreed in principle with the applicants that this be extended an additional 100 feet for a total of 200 feet as a buffer. The area here for the plant and processing area, due to some other permitting requirements from the state and federal agencies, we'll wait to get those permits in hand to ensure that we've got that appropriately laid out. Few other conditions. We mentioned that a major portion of this site's in the floodway, a no-rise certification would be required. Also, a 50-foot riparing buffer is required on all the plants... Also, a 50-foot riparing buffer is required on all the plans in the future, unless they're exempted by the buffer regulations. And in turn, this site also must comply with the stormwater ordinance for nutrient control. With that, Madam Chair, we'll move forward with the public hearing.
Okay. We'll declare the public hearing open, and we'll just go down the list of the people who have signed in. And when you come forward to the mic, when the manager calls your name, if you'll identify yourself, please, and tell us where you're from or who you're representing. Thank you.
Okay, first we have Tim Bizel.
Excuse me, can we change the order of representation there?
You mean the one, you all?
Yes.
Yes.
I'd like to go before, that's all right.
That's okay.
I'd like to thank the board for seeing us tonight and...
Identify yourself.
My name's Cliff Harris. I'm with Harris Engineering and Surveying. We're the consulting firm for American Materials that have helped prepare these plans. And I'm here to answer any questions that the board may have from an engineering and surveying standpoint. Just would like to start out by saying, American Materials has been the operator of the plant across the Highway 222 here. That plant will, and that sand mine, will be reclaimed, and this is to take its place as we go on in the future. That's to happen as soon as hopefully we can get conditional use approval tonight, and then the other state permits that are required, that'll be forthcoming, hopefully. Like to the board to consider that part of our design and initial layout in this, American Materials understands the need for safety. They have an extremely high safety rating. Our layout for this mine took that into account. Where there are existing ponds on this adjoining property now, when American Materials gets going, this area will be protected even more. And as far as land value, we've got this, the pictures that we'd like the board to see. That'll show how the property, not only Johnny Penner property, how it's being left, but also on further down Old River Road, the Buck property, how that's been reclaimed and Unless you have any other questions.
What we'll generally do is listen to everyone at the public hearing, and then if we have questions...
Please call me back.
At the end, we may call you back up.
Thank you, ma'am.
To get your answers. Thank you. Would you like to come next?
I'd like to...
That'll be fine, if you'll come forward, please.
Good evening. My name is Dave Carson. I live in Greenville, 3905 Fernwood Lane. I am here tonight to represent the family of the property owners, which includes my wife, Neil. She was a Dupree. She's here. And her brother, Mr. Mac Dupree, he is also here. And they've asked me to speak on their behalf to encourage you to consider this conditional use permit. This property has been in the family possession for several generations. And as you know, the farming end of land use today is not like it has been before. And we'd like to give you several reasons why we think, as landowners, that maybe you should consider approving this request. The property will present a more pleasant landscape when the land is reclaimed. And you can see that visually through your booklets that has been handed to you tonight. It's just beautiful across 222. It's unbelievable how that's been transferred from an open, dry, dusty field to a, just a luscious wetland that is a beautiful lake. Also, this, by approving this, will enhance the land value of the surrounding property because of what you see here tonight. This also represents the best use of this property, since it is mostly sandy soil, and its value has limits. Our family has been seeking ways to use this land to support our retirement, and this seems to afford that opportunity. We've also spoken to several landowners, adjacent landowners, and they have had no objection to this approval. We think this is a reasonable request, and we appreciate your support in approving this conditional use request. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Carson.
Tim Bizel?
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
You've got, how many people listed to talk?
We have ten.
Have you determined whether all of them are in favor, or are there some opposed to this?
Well...
If you've got repetition, then one could speak for all of them.
I was going to say that, and I wasn't sure whether we needed to hear from all the builders and the engineers, but generally in our, and I'm saying this for the whole audience, if there is someone, if there are three or four of you speaking to the same purpose, if you choose somebody to speak for your group, and then you can ask your group to stand that is representing your view that you have presented. And we don't have to do it that way, but it cuts down on the time and the repetition and hearing the same thing. Do you understand what I'm saying, that if there are four or five people here, or three or four, who are going to be saying the same thing, if you would choose someone to speak for you, and then we'll ask those other people to stand? So we've given up on Mr. Bizel once or twice, so...
Yep.
With that said, if you'll take a few seconds to say what you want to say...
I'll take a very short time, and we'll defer.
And then we will move on.
Some of us have been looking at it for five years, so we are very familiar with the situation this time.
If you'll allow me, I'll make mine very short.
That'll be fine, if you'll step up to the mic, so everybody can hear you.
We'll defer our others until, if needed, at the end.
Okay.
My name is Tim Bizel. I'm president of American Materials Company. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. First off, I'd like to thank the commissioners for allowing us the time to present our proposal tonight. I'd also like to thank the planning department for their time and direction on this project. We have been working in the Bellvoir community for 13 years. I'd like to thank the community for allowing us to do so. We've worked hard to be good neighbors in the community. Our present location is on the property of Mr. and Mrs. Johnny Penner, and it has been recognized by our peers as an extraordinary site. The people we purchased our plant equipment from and other equipment have approached us on several occasions, because they wanted to put us in the national magazines to promote, in their terms, the words they use is "how to do it right." We have worked there with the landowners and their children, their grandchildren, for years now, including their pet lab, which was a mascot for some time. We've done this all in harmony. We recognize foremost, safety is our number-one job. That's what we do, that's what we've been promoted with, American Materials, and we have won numerous safety awards through the mining environment with the MSHA, as we're governed by. They have, in the same time as we've been operating there, built two gorgeous homes. If anybody's not been by there to see them, and you're in the area, you need to stop by and take a look, they're very impressive. What we're asking for tonight is continue to be a part of your community. In planning this project, we've worked hard to minimize the impact on the community, our neighbors, and the environment. From an operation standpoint, the plant would have been much better served to be in the field at the intersection of 222 and Old River Road. And our operations guy, that's when we first were drawn out, that's where he come to me, and he presented it. But after discussion on that, that's not a neighbor-friendly way to do it. So we chose, even though that would be a better approach for us, that wasn't a better approach for the community. So we decided to pull it back, which is more in the middle of the property. We're going to utilize as much of the trees and the buffer, natural buffers that are there now, as we can to hide and screen the site. We're also rerouted our exit, and we're doing it down the tree line to shield it from public view, because we want to blend in with the community. All this, we desire to blend in community, at the same time, do our purpose. Our purpose is producing quality sand, which services all the concrete plants in this area, every single one of them, depend on us. They depend on us to make a quality product and a quality service to keep their jobs on schedule. I'm asking for your support tonight to allow us to continue to be a vital part of your community. Hope and trust you will see that we are good neighbors and want to continue to be for many years to come. On behalf of American Materials, our customers, and all others, thank you again for your time and support.
Thank you very much. What we can do at this time is ask for the people, if you would like to come forward to speak in favor of this, or if you would be willing to stand everyone who is here tonight that supports this sand mining event. Okay. And we'll go down.
Next, we have Tony Harold, Harold or Harrod?
Harris.
Harris, okay.
We're going to defer.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Next, Sam Dawson Jr.
You can step forward to the mic, Mr. Dawson.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak. My name is Sam Dawson Jr. I live at 4337 Old River Road. I think the only thing I could really say for this, I heard some interesting comments about how there was no one in opposition of this thing being done, but I've been in this neighborhood for about six years now, and at the property that I'm at right now, and I haven't talked to anybody, any of my neighbors, who are in favor. And the property that's got these beautiful homes on it, that's picturesque and all of that, if you drive in the driveway, you can see them, and they are probably million-dollar homes, but if you're driving down the street, you're probably going to miss them. They're covered by what I call an eyesore, which is this current mine that they're working on. Another real major concern that I have, I've got two young children, and anyone who's got kids know that they're very adventurous, very curious. There's several other of these reclaimed properties, I think they called, not far from us, and they don't look very picturesque to me, but I could just imagine my kids exploring into this thing, trying to see what it looks like, trying to turn it into a swimming pool. I've got a neighbor that lives next door to me that's got kids, that's about three or four years old, seven or eight years old. I could imagine finding one of them floating in this thing. And the setback that we're talking about, 200 feet or whatever, I think the property is going to, the man, the mine is probably going to be roughly about 200 feet from my closest driveway, maybe just a tad bit more, I haven't measured. The bottom line is, I would ask the board to deny this permit. I could talk all night about reasons, anywhere from taxpayer expense on maintaining the road, from the trucks going back and forth to and from it, the noise that would be made from the operation over there at all hours of the day and night. But I think all of that would be redundant. The bottom line is, is we don't think, as neighbors in that neighborhood, that that's a good idea to have this thing there. We've already got one eyesore 500 feet down the road, and as you go through the neighborhood within a five-mile radius, there's probably about three or four others, and every one of them are eyesores. I see one more coming if you let this happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dawson.
Mr. and Mrs. Brian Walker?
Good evening, all. Thank y'all for hearing me. I'm Brian Walker, live on 3686 Old River Road. And Mr. Dawson has pretty much said all that I had in mind. With, there is one thing that I'd like to talk about, though, that he didn't mention, and that was the issue of traffic. He touched on it lightly. Specifically, the Old River Road area, the, there's a small cluster of homes in that area, and everyone takes care of their property. When I'm out there cutting my grass, I've been living there about 10 years, I've been out there cutting my grass, and over the years, it just seems like the traffic, and I'm, make no mistake, I'm talking truck traffic, it just seems like it has gotten to the point where I wonder whether I'm living, you know, on the bypass. The speed that they fly through there scares me. My neighbor across the street, he has two little boys, just as Mr. Dawson does. And it just think that having another, another source for this traffic to come out of just doesn't need to be. To be certain, I have seen the homes that were mentioned earlier, and it is a nice property, lovely area, but it doesn't fit with the rest of the community. And I guess that, in that respect, I'm thinking that this pit should probably be directed the other direction away from where the established residents are now. It just doesn't fit. And the traffic, again, it concerns me. The, it's probably a question to be answered by the engineer, whenever you get the time to do it, but this buffer that has been expanded to 200 feet, what, I guess my question would be is, or my concern is one of land shift. Not an expert on this, know nothing about it, but I do know when you take away, you shift, you have unintended consequences in how the land can be shifted, and sometimes further away than you might think. So this 200-foot buffer, which started as a 100-foot one, which I believe is the standard, just has me concerned. That's, I believe that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. And we'll try to see that that question gets answered. Mr. Walker?
Okay, next, Mr. and Mrs. Frank Peterson?
My name is Frank Peterson Jr. I live at 3545 Old River Road, and I'm speaking in opposition of this sand mine. From a young kid, I used to work for Hurst Concrete Company. There's approximately 25 to 30 holes left open out there on the Old River Road. Nevertheless, the dump truck traffic, just had that road resurfaced last year, it's getting in terrible shape right now. Now that the summer is out, kids are out of school, I think last year we lost a kid. There's no pool over there, no nothing over there. U.S. Commissioners have done nothing to enhance north of the river. And at this present time, I think this pit need to be relocated someplace else. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Peterson.
Next, Mr. and Mrs. Lonnie Brown?
I live at 4347 Old River Road. My property goes all the way downside of there, the property they talk about digging sand off of. I have two little grandkids that's living with me, and I'm looking at the safety of my grandkids. It's not if a kid's going to get in that place and drowned it, it's when does that kid is going to get in there and get drowned it. I ask each and every one of you, do you agree, it's on your conscience? Because if you agree, it's on your conscience. I have a real sick wife, she's had 13 heart attacks. She's been hearing the noise from the other sand pit across from me. It keeps her upset. If you bring the sand pit there, you'll probably kill my wife, so I don't want it. I don't want it. I'm fighting as hard as I can, and I'm going to do everything I can to stop it. And I thank everybody that lives there. And I thank everybody that lives there. We looking at our kids. Think about your kids. Do you want it there? You want it in your backyard? I don't think so. I don't think anyone knew you want it there. I just got out of hospital with a heart attack, just come home Thursday. But I come up here just because I had to. I couldn't stand by and know if I could save one kid, it was worth it. And I asked each and every one of you. No, we don't want it. I don't think y'all want it. We know you put our kids in such harm's way. People tried to buy that property. They talking about they need money. Sell the property to somebody that can use it in the correct way, we're protecting our kids. That's what I asked. Do that. Several people would buy it. So, thank you. And I've said my piece.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Think this is Lanny Brown?
Yes, my name is Lorelei Dot Brown. I'm married to Lonnie Junior, Lonnie Brown Junior. We reside at forty-three forty-nine Gold River Road. Our land adjoins, well, actually, it's my father-in-law's land, it'll be shortly paid off. Fifteen years ago, when my father-in-law purchased this land, I don't believe he would have made such a purchase, had he known we were gonna be in a sand pit. I believe Bellbor has enough of them. We're in the back half of the property, we have an acre pond, we have ducks, fish, geese. When the sand pit comes, the pond's gonna be empty. I mean, wildlife, recreation, traffic, children, I mean, I believe we've addressed just about everything. We haven't even just started on the property value. Our property value's gonna go way down. Who's gonna wanna buy a piece of property, ten acres of land with a sand pit? I mean, that's just my personal feelings. But I'm definitely opposed of it. And it's in your hands. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the last person signed up is Sherri Baker?
Hello, my name is Sherri Baker. I also reside at forty-three forty-nine Old River Road. I'm also opposed to it. They touched on most of the things that were said. But also, I heard them speak about the beautiful homes that were adjacent to the property that's already have a sand pit. They chose to live there. We also chose where we are without a sand pit. The sand pit was there when they chose to live there. We're not choosing to live there. And that's the only other thing I have to say, I'm opposed to it also.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Okay, that's all that we have signed up. We will close the public hearing and open it to the commissioners for questions and comments. And we can call anyone else up that you wanna ask a question of. Commissioner Johnson, you had your hand up first.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I believe my questions have now been answered.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Garris?
I guess my comment is, have we had any community meetings with the citizens and the community to try to resolve some of these concerns that they've expressed?
If you'll come to the, if you don't mind coming and answering those questions.
Tim Buzel again. I have met with Mr. Brown and Mr. Dawson Jr., because they were the two ones that we had heard from that had some opposition. So I went out and met with them, and listened to their concerns, and addressed their concerns. That's one of the reasons we moved a hundred foot setback that is required for the normal conditional use to two hundred foot, to try to give a little more leadway there. And so we did offer our, and I went back again last week, I asked them to meet with Mr. Brown, and that's when he was in the hospital. But I have not heard from anyone else, didn't know anyone else was opposed.
I just wonder if we could do more of the community meetings to try to resolve these issues. Because I know that, you know, Pitt County is a growing county, and we need the sand. But I also am concerned about the issues that the neighborhood expressed. They are real concerns. They have, you know, they have real concerns. And if there's any way we could get together and work those concerns out, I think it would be good for the neighborhood and good for your business.
You were, if you don't mind coming back up and since some questions was asked of you, the one Mr. Walker, was it Mr. Walker or Mr. Peterson, had the shift of the, you know, the land of the homeowners?
He is a registered surveyor, engineer. He would be better served to answer that.
While he's coming up, the buffer was mentioned, the two hundred foot buffer?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that just gonna be two hundred feet of land? Are you all gonna plant trees in there? Will there be, like a berm?
We will, excuse me, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
It will be a minimum six foot berm. And we will dress that up there.
When you say dress that up?
We will dress it up, plant it, seed it, you know, we can put trees on it. We can, when I went and met with him, I even talked about doing that and putting a fence on top of it, if that was, but they informed me that that wouldn't matter, it wouldn't stop eleven-year-old child from climbing over the fence. So, I mean, we will offer to do whatever requirements we can, you know, make it safer. I mean, that's, that's.
So you offered a fence and the trees and that kind of thing, vegetation. Okay, thank you, I'm sorry. Now the engineering answer.
I believe the question was related to what effect would the excavation have on adjoining property as far as the laying back of the slope and how that would impact further away. The natural repose of sand is about a two-point-seven foot slope to one. Deener, the state mining criteria that we've got to go, that all mines have to be approved by, require three to one, which is even greater. You have to lay the slope back even more than the natural repose. So there's measures that, we've done dozens of pits, you get the, you get the slope seeded, you get them, your vegetation well-established, you do not have any, any conditions further from the mining boundary. Deener will not allow that to happen. They'll require American Materials to harden the slopes if need be, to prevent this from happening. That's, that's just a requirement that is part of the state law that has to be observed.
Does Deener come in and inspect on a regular basis?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
When you're doing your mining?
Yes, ma'am. Part of that comes under what they require as a reclamation bond. In order for us to go in there and do the things we do, unlike they mentioned on some of the previous one in many, many years past, someone come in, dig it up and leave it. We have to put a bond up for the amount that they choose is required to, if we up and left, that there's money sitting there to go pay a contractor to come in and do this reclamation. And one of the things we have done in a gut, regards with Deener is we reclaim as we got. And you can see that on the adjacent property. And that solidifies it from the slides.
So when this land is reclaimed, it will be a pond?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay. Anyone else? Mr. James?
I have several questions. I'm very familiar with mining. I got them around me, but I'm a little different than them, I don't oppose it. I think they look good. I like the ducks and so forth. But what concerned me was what Lonnie and Teresa said. They have a pond of about one acre on their property already. Is that not correct? You're not afraid that they're getting, your kids are getting drowned it there? Well, she said that you would lose that pond, though, if you. Okay, all right. The next thing, of course, that, where would the trucks be coming out of the property?
We're proposing with your approval to come out on Highway two-twenty-two.
Two-twenty-two, so that would be on the opposite side of where they are talking about, of course.
Yes, sir. We did that with the property owners in mind.
Yeah.
Because the property owner across the highway is in full support of us, and it's even coming out right in front of his house.
Yeah, all right. The next thing now, have you thought about putting a fence up over there on the Stokes Road? I know they own about three houses. You've got the trip house, I don't see her here anywhere. And then you got about three more houses there on the Old River Road is all you have, maybe two. Go to the corner up to Stokes Road. And these houses messed me on the Stokes Road, of course, primarily, most of them are, anyway.
Yes, the thing, if I may, on the Stokes Road side, there's an existing tree line, is a big buffered area, it's a very swampy, grown-up, thick area, would be a whole lot more harder to cross than putting a fence up. That's a difficult area to come through.
I'm talking about before you get to that place that you're talking about, though. Down along Stokes Road cliff, you got those mobile homes between there and the Dupree property.
Yes, sir.
That's what I'm talking about, putting that fence up, to make sure that kids do not go there.
And that's where Mr. Buzel met with Mr. Brown, and even offered to put a fence there along that line. This is the same line that we've increased from a hundred foot to two hundred foot, and is even offered to put a woven wire fence along that line to help with the safety issue from the children. As you continue on around to the, on the Stokes Road, you've got the wetlands that, like Tim says, that's a barrier in and of themselves.
Once you get down there, then you got lowlands coming from the river. I'm very familiar, I've been there for fifty-some years, and so you're not telling me anything about the property, much longer than any of these have been, I'm afraid. But I'm very familiar with it. But I too am very much concerned about cherem. And I don't understand why anybody that's concerned about them wouldn't want a good fence there. That's kinda, I would be, I would want the fence myself, because I think it's, would deter, would cause kids from getting there. And, you know, we don't lose very many kids, we lose more of them in small ponds than we do anywhere else. And I notice state is gonna, I know the state is gonna require, because forty years ago, I had one dug, and the state comes there, and they make sure that that slant, and it's not steep, but it's going at a slant.
That's right.
So therefore, it minimizes, and is, I think, very good. But I don't want, some of you might want to ask questions.
Could I just say, instead of offering, maybe let that be part of your plan, or consider that? And I'm just offering that out there. Mr. Owens, I have you next. Okay, Mr. Hammond, and then Mr. Owens?
Yes, ma'am. I have my answer, of all those that support it stand, and all those that oppose it stand, I have my answer.
Okay, we've already had that happened. Okay, Mr. Owens?
I think my question's been answered.
Okay. Anyone else down this way? Yes, Mr. McGlaughlin?
Madam Chair, you know, when you look at these number of people, certainly, I thought that this was going to be a favorable recommendation in terms of the majority of the people approving this. We've often, oftentimes, look at the consent of the neighboring, the neighbors, in terms of how they feel about certain situations. And when you have these many people opposing it, while I was in favor of it at first, but when you have these many people opposing it, and I think Commissioner Garris brought up a very, very valid point, in that I would love to see that you, the ones who are for it, get together with those who are opposing it, and have a neighborhood meeting. I'm not ready to vote on this now. I certainly think that we ought to table it, and that until such time you can get together, some people brought up the point that they would devalue the property. Some people brought up the point of noise. I haven't heard that addressed. I don't know whether it can be addressed. But my concern is that, I like to make a motion that this be tabled until such time that you can get together with the neighbors, bring back a recommendation at that time, and we can proceed from there, Madam Chair.
Okay. Madam Attorney, can we do a motion now?
First, you'd need to close your public hearing.
Okay, that was what I thought. Okay. Well, yes, sir.
Johnny Penner that owns the property across the road presented a letter today to the board, and I just was asking, did everyone get this letter?
Yes.
Because it addresses some of the same concerns, and shows how it can be done in harmony and how we operate.
We have a copy here, and many of us gotten it by email.
And one last thing, there's actually two ponds that are really right on top of the properties in question, that are well less bordered than what ours will be. I just wanted to make note.
What do you mean, less border?
Well, they're a lot more open.
And trees and that sort of thing? Okay.
If I could, one other thing that was brought up, if I could, the truck traffic issue. The thing we're asking for is, this is a replacement site for our site across the highway. So once we close that and down, we'll begin to operate this. We will not increase the truck traffic. It will be the same as it is now. And in mind, as I was meeting with Mr. Brown and Mr. Dawson, and we were talking about the trucks there, and I met with them for an hour and a half or better. Continuous dump trucks were coming, no doubt. But for that hour and a half or better, we were there, all those trucks were coming from the quarry, to Mark Marietta Quarry, to the local, two asphalt plants right there in that vicinity, and a concrete plant. Not a single truck came out of our mine while we were there. We're only gonna have thirty, thirty-five trucks a day. There's a lot more truck traffic in there because of there, because that's the main approach from the quarry site to the adjacent businesses.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And those are some of the things I think that we're saying. We're just gonna give you an opportunity to, instead of doing a vote tonight. But yes, let me close the public hearing, and then I'll see what the commissioners want to say.
Can I address one more issue, please?
Yes, sir.
It was brought up about draining and affecting their adjoining properties' ponds. There's wetlands between those ponds and this proposed site. Part of getting a dewater, dewandering permit from the state of North Carolina is you cannot, they will by no means allow you to drain wetlands. To drain their ponds, we would have to drain the wetlands that are in between this proposed site and the existing ponds. So that is, that's an issue that, that they would be fined out of business if they drained those wetlands.
Okay, thank you very much.
Madam Chairman, there's a gentleman in the audience, I don't think he's spoken yet. Have you, sir, that wanted to speak?
Okay, well, were you sworn in? Okay. We'll have to have you come forward and be sworn in to speak to a conditional site. Okay, if you'll step up to the microphone and identify yourself, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Reverend McNeil, and I reside at twenty-nine twenty-one Stokes Road. And I was listening at the gentleman, there is three ponds, four ponds already in that vicinity. Four. I have three on my property, twenty-nine twenty-one Stokes Road. And Mr. Lonnie is right behind me. And like he said, we are not looking for no deaths in our family. And I oppose of this, whatever they're gonna do in that vicinity. They should have, you know, got more in contact with the people that live and bought property in that facility. But as he said, they only got in touch with, I think, was two. But I live right next to the property where they talking about mining. So, that's my, I got six children, I got about fourteen grandchildren, and I got three, two great-grandchildren, and one on the way. And I wanna leave my property. I ain't got many days here, I'm gonna die as a patient. And I know I ain't got that much time, but I wanna leave my property to my children, and my grandchildren, and my great-grandchildren. God bless you.
Thank you, Reverend McNeil. Okay. Yes, ma'am? And I think you were sworn in. If you'll come up and identify yourself, please.
Yes, I am Lena Walker, and I live at thirty-six eighty-six Old River Road. My husband is Brian Walker. I do appreciate what Mr. McGlaughlin was saying, in the effect to table this decision. I do appreciate what Mr. McGlaughlin was saying, and the effect to table this decision. However, I would like to see a lot of you that could, Commissioners, come out to see the beautiful site that they are talking about. The site by no means is beautiful to me. The houses are beautiful, yes. The land is beautiful, yes, but the barrier that they put up is not picturesque, as one of the men was saying. Please take some time to come out in that area and look for yourself. I think that would help your decision.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Okay, let me close the public hearing, and I will hear, would you like to make your motion at this time, Mr. McGlaughlin?
Yes, ma'am, I'd like to make a motion that we table this concern until the parties that's for it get together with those opposing it, and to work out a reasonable solution, hopefully, and bring it back to this board at some later date.
Okay, is there a second?
I will second that. I think it is always good for people to get together and work things out, and I'm a firm believer, I'm the eternal optimist, I believe that reasonable people getting together can work things out, and I would really like to see that done.
Okay, Mr. James?
I believe that you need to get together to find a solution to the problem. Some of you've got the idea that it's not going to happen. I don't have that idea. So I'm telling you now, get there and make it safe, so that you don't have to worry about your kids getting around it. It's the only way to do it, and you can do it. And anybody that opposes a fence, I've got a question to ask them, believe me, I have. Because you can keep small kids, I hope you're going to look at them, but I think you're going to have to get together. It's private property, even though I'm for planning and zoning, but you can't go so far on it for the individual rights of people. And I support the motion, of course, but for goodness sakes, get together, don't have a closed mind, that it's not going to go that period. But you look at ways that you can make it safe, you might as well face it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. James. Anyone else? Okay, let's vote, excuse me, yes, sir.
So you are going to be, you are going to be closing one mine and opening another one. Now, see, how many people do you have employed in that mine that you would have to close?
Seven.
So if you did not open this new mine, those people wouldn't have a job?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that is, that's important.
Is it just seven? I think he's...
We have a big support group when we are buying fuel and everything.
Sure, sure. And you have a large customer base. So that needs to be part of this discussion.
And then the roads, we're talking about the damage to the roads, the cost to the state, if we move further from the market, that's just more wear and tear.
Okay.
And remember what they are talking about, it is a beautiful place. If you go on the Old River Road, it's not on 222. Don't look at 222, go on the Old River Road, and you'll see what's going to be when, at the final outcome of the project.
Y'all let Mr. James know when you get the meeting together. Okay, and Mr. McGlaughlin, too, I think both of you all might like to be there. Okay, let's vote, please, on the motion to table. Okay, it passes. Thank you all for being here tonight. That's it for our public hearings.
Yes, ma'am.
And our next item of business is the recognition of one of our Eagle Scouts.
Yes, ma'am, if the board can act on that first.
Will you act on that, please?
Motion to recognize Mr. Taylor.
Let's vote, please.
Miss Ward, if you would vote before you go down?
Oh, I do.
Thank you.
Taylor's.
Welcome. Andrew, Mike?
You want your sister to come up? She can. Okay, that's okay, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to embarrass you.
All right, well, tonight we are going to honor the son of one of Pitt County's own, Mike Taylor, his son, Brandon, Zachary Brandon Taylor, Zack, and Zack is a member of Troop 9046, and tonight we are presenting a Eagle Scout Award to Mr. Taylor. And let me just read the certificate, it says Certificate of Appreciation is awarded to Zachary Brandon Taylor, Troop 9046, for achieving the Eagle Scout Award. His project, he built two picnic tables and three benches to place along the Alice King Complex walking trail. He built and put, or installed, one bench at the Pitt County Animal Shelter as well. And the certificate is presented by the Pitt County Board of Commissioners this 18th day of June 2012, signed by our chairman, Beth B. Ward.
Congratulations, and very proud of you, and proud of your team, Mama. Thank you. And Dad. And I'll say one more time, I think it's been a few meetings since I've said this, but so many of these projects that these Eagles do benefit our community, in fact, almost all of them do. And this is done out at our park, the Alice King Park, and the animal shelter, so we appreciate your thoughtfulness on that, and would you like to say something, Zack?
I would like to say something.
Okay, good for you.
Well, I'd like to thank my parents for pushing me. It was a struggle at first, but they really stood behind me all the way, and kept me going, even when I didn't want to. I also like to thank my troop, my scoutmaster, all the leadership helped me up until this point, and I just thank them for what they've done for me, and helped me have become the person I am, so.
Good for you, good job.
Of course.
Thank you very much. I'd be scrambling away. Our next item of business is, if you'll take over, Mr. Elliott, and introduce the item and the gentleman who's going to present.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Next item we have on the agenda is entitled, "The North Carolina Department of Revenue Sales Tax Issue." We have in the audience tonight David Baker, who is with the Department of Revenue, is the Director of Local Government Division of the Department of Revenue. As the board is aware, through newspaper coverage, and also communication from myself and staff, the Department of Revenue visited the county back in March of this year, and made us aware of an impending payback situation that the 10 municipalities plus county government would be faced with due to an overpayment of sales tax revenues over a three-year period of 2007, 2008, and 2009. I've got a couple documents to give you, just to give you an overview of the situation. First document shows the amount owed by each jurisdiction. This is the net amount of money. The original amount of money we were told would be $4.2 million collectively, that was through one audit. Through a second audit, they told us we actually had a credit coming to us of about $1,253. So the net effect for the entire county is $2.9 million, $2,918,062, which you can see the county share on the top of the first chart, is $1,771,798. And even of that portion, 20% of that can be attributed to the set aside of Article 40 and 42 that we use for capital construction for schools. So technically, Pitt County's bottom line is about $1,440,000, if we capture a portion of what's set aside already in those school projects. The second document I wanted to give you was just a list of questions that we had originally posed to the Department of Revenue. Myself and the county attorney, finance director, went with staff from the city of Greenville to meet with the Secretary of Department of Revenue, David Hoyle, as well as Mr. Baker, who was Assistant Director, and our intent was to discuss this situation, try to find a more amenable terms of having them come to an issue with it without the county having to pay it back, since this was not a mistake that was made by anybody within Pitt County government, or by any of its 10 municipalities. So with that, that's kind of my opening comments. I would recommend that, what I asked for the Department of Revenue was to come before you tonight, again, try to answer some of our original questions. You do have a written statement they provided, I do want to note that part of that written statement starts off saying that we asked for this audit, we did not ask for this audit, just wanted to clarify that. But he's been asked to kind of give the who, what, why, where, and when of this, so with that, I'd turn it over to Mr. Baker.
Okay, Mr. Baker, if you'll come forward, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Appreciate you tuning to be here. Wish it was a little bit on different terms, but we are here to discuss the sales tax issue that Mr. Elliott brought up to you. What I'd like to do first is just try to explain to the board as much as I can how the sales tax actually works, what we're faced with at Department of Revenue in trying to administer the sales tax for local governments. As Ms. Elliott said, I am Director for Local Government Division. We created that division back in January of last year, to try to help serve local governments a little bit better, to have a central contact with local governments. I've been with the department for about 25 years. Always done property tax until about a year, a year and a half ago, when I was asked to take over Local Government Division. We are responsible for pretty much all your local revenue comes through our division at this point. We send out about $180 to $200 million a month to local governments on sales tax. Altogether, it's about $3 billion a year that goes through our division. And so the issue that we're talking about here was not one that the department created, it was one the department was asked to correct, and that's basically what we're trying to do, with what we call a reallocation of funds here. Basically, sales tax is a tax that, the easiest way to think about it, and the way I often try to think about it, is there's 100 buckets, and then there's like one extra bucket. And every day, every month, there's money flowing into the department, it's being processed, retailers sell items to other taxpayers, they collect a sales tax, and they remit it to the department. And we put that money in those buckets based on those returns. So if taxpayer tells us that particular sale took place in a particular location, that money goes in that bucket for that county. At the same time money's going in those buckets, money is coming out of those buckets. Certain taxpayers are allowed to ask for refunds of the sales taxes they pay in, and as that comes in, we take the money back out of the bucket. The extra bucket there is for money that's not clear on where it's supposed to go, and it goes in that, and then it's distributed back out to all 100 counties, based on what the statute says on that. Same thing with refund, if the refund is not clear on where it goes, comes out of, some of it comes out of that bucket, which we call Bucket 101. So that's very simple as far as what takes place, but it's constant. These buckets are constantly adjusted on a daily basis, and what we do is, at some point during each month, we basically put a lid on that bucket and say, this is how much goes to each county. Where this incident here took place is, the money that was sent to Pitt County was fine, it should have gone to Pitt County. When the refund was requested from different taxpayers to come out of that bucket, it wasn't, we were not told to take it out of Pitt County alone, we were told to take it out of other counties as well. So basically, what took place over the 30-month period is that money that should have been taken away from Pitt County was taken away from other counties. So there's no new money here, it's just a reallocation of the money from one county to another. Now, Secretary Hoyle, after listening to this, agreed to allow the counties, the county and municipalities in Pitt County 30 months for us to take this money back, and that was equal to the amount of time that these errors took place. So we tried to minimize as much as possible the impact to the county and to the cities and towns in Pitt County. Now, by statute, we could have taken it all out in one month. Obviously, we wouldn't want to do that, because of the impact on the citizens in Pitt County. So we did agree to do it over a 30-month period. That's basically what took place now. The six provisions in the statute prohibits me from really talking in a lot of details about who the taxpayers are, of the actual numbers involved by taxpayers, but I'd be glad to try and answer any questions I can on a generic basis. So that's basically where we are on that. There are some other questions that was asked, as far as what do we do to try to prohibit this from taking place? We would love to do away with this process. We spend a tremendous amount of resources taking money in and then giving it right back, and when those don't match up, then we spend tremendous amount of time doing reallocations of funds. Like I said, there's no new money here. We take money from County A, we give it to County B, we take money from County B, we send it to County A, so it's constant. We're looking at our processes, I don't think this issue can be resolved through our processes, though. Less likely, we're looking at, there are some things there can be done, and whether or not we can get those accomplished in the upcoming long session is open for debate, but we are looking at some of those. Education is another way that we try to, we will continue to try to educate taxpayers on how to do this correctly, so that doesn't create this problem. We have hired a full-time auditor, James Rambo, of course, is here with me tonight, and he is that full-time auditor that is just for the Local Government Division, which we've never had before. And he, his job is to basically try to correct some of these errors that are out there, and try to figure out a way to prevent these errors. So we're looking at it from every direction we can, and I dare say that's not been done before, like we are looking at it now. That's one reason why we formed a Local Government Division, was to do those type things, to try to prevent these things from happening. This is nothing new, it's just the size of this one is very large, unfortunately, but it's not anything that, we don't constantly see all the time in other counties as well. So we're looking at different ways to try to correct that, any way we can. So I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have concerning the issue.
Okay, Mr. Hammond, can we start, and go around and see if everybody has something they'd like to say?
Well, I'm sorry, if you let me.
Okay, yes, sir, I'll let you start it, and then we'll start down here with Mr. Webb, thank you.
Yes, sir. I've heard from several people how this occurred, can you tell me in your way how this occurred, and what has been done to prevent it from reoccurring?
Well, again, the way it takes place is that a retailer will tell us to send money to Pitt County, and that money was collected, say, from someone who, a taxpayer that's entitled to a refund. The taxpayer that's entitled to a refund tells us to take that money from five counties, including Pitt County, and these five counties have lost money that they were, they ever got to start with. And so when that doesn't match up, then, and it comes to our attention, our obligation is to correct that. And so that's basically what took place there. As far as preventing it, we can't prevent taxpayers from filing incorrect returns and incorrect refunds. All we can do is try to educate them on how to do that, and that's what we're trying to do. Less likely, if we can make some changes where those match up, the money paid in exactly matches the money asked for back from the same county, then that will resolve the issue. But as we stand right now, without a less likely change, without taxpayers being educated to the point they don't make these mistakes, it will happen again. It will happen to this extent, hopefully not, and we have addressed this with the taxpayers involved in this situation.
Mr. Hammond, if I can just expound upon Mr. Baker's comment, I think it was reported in the media that we are, we're talking about one large nonprofit that this was all attributed to, and it's unnamed, we can't say who it is, there's many nonprofits in Pitt County, as well as one major supplier. The other thing is, Mr. Baker, you made the comment that taxpayers have three years to, if they've made a mistake on their tax return or something, to ask for a correction on it. One thing that we had posed to the Department of Revenue was, in the spirit of cooperation, that there's...
that there's no statute of limitations for the counties that you can go back as many years as you want on us. And this is going back to 2007, 2008, 2009. We'd kind of proposed with the secretary to play fair that since taxpayers can only go back three years, asking for a correction on a refund, why not hold counties and cities to that same level of law, even though the law doesn't say that, but in the spirit of cooperation? That, just wanted the board to know we did pose that to the secretary. We didn't get very far with that, that argument, but just wanted to lay that out there.
And we would be glad statutorily if we could make that change. That's one of the things we've talked about pursuing in a long session, is a statute of limitations on that. But keep in mind here, too, that if this was reversed, okay, and Pitt County was the county that was owed the money to, your take on that may be a little different. But keep in mind, for all the money that's coming back to the state is going back to another county, or three, or four, or five. Those counties did not have this money. They never received the money, start with, and we took money away from them. So that's just, you know, keep that in mind as we talk about this.
Okay. Mr. Hammond, anything else?
No. My second part was what has been done to prevent this occurrence from reoccurring. That's what I was asking you.
That's what I said. We have addressed this with the taxpayers involved in this particular situation. So hopefully, that will prevent this particular situation from happening again. But I cannot stand here and tell you that other taxpayers won't make errors, and we will not know about those errors until audit catches those in some way. Now, we are looking at things legislatively, we're looking at education, we're looking at audits to try to correct all this and catch it sooner and deal with that. But I will not stand here and tell you that it will be corrected, because as long as the system is the way it is right now, these type of errors will take place. Hopefully not to the extent this one was, but it will take place.
Okay. Let's go like this, Mr. James. Mr. Webb, you have some questions or comments?
Yes, Madam Chairman. Thank you. Is this Pitt County's fault?
No.
Whose fault is it?
It's the taxpayer's fault.
The taxpayer.
Yep.
Why aren't they made to correct the, I mean, it appears that we're a victim in this, that we, I understand that we received, but what I'm saying is, it is not our error. So usually, whoever makes the mistake is at fault, and they have to correct the fault.
There's nothing statutorily here that says that the taxpayer who made an error in filing their refund request in any way has to pay that back to anybody. But the money was paid in, and the money was entitled to go back, and that's exactly what happened. The money was taken away from the incorrect counties, though.
Why wasn't this caught at the Department of Revenue until now?
Well, it's impossible for us to catch these, because you got to keep in mind, the money's paid in over a period of time, the refund comes in at a different period of time. Those never match up. They never, they never, it's impossible, the way money comes in, and the way the process is, for those to ever match up, until something comes to our attention where we actually ask for all the documentation and go through that. And it takes a lot of time on one like this to actually figure it out. So it's impossible to catch on a day-to-day basis.
Or they check it all?
Or what check?
The returns as they come in?
That's how this one was caught, if someone did catch it.
An audit, we're talking about an audit several years later. I'm talking about, in general, on a daily basis, do you ever, do you guys catch these types of mistakes, or are they just kind of rubber stamped and sent through, and then we do it through the audit process?
It's through the audit process, I'm sure.
Okay. So they're not checked when they come in?
The refunds are processed, and obviously, someone's put their eyes on the refund. But what I'm saying is, there's no way anybody that's looking at that refund request can know whether or not that money, that refund request is correct when it comes in.
So the state of North Carolina has no scrutiny mechanism. So if I submitted a refund today for this, there'd be no scrutiny put on it, basically, from the state, because there's no mechanism to apply any scrutiny to whatever numbers flow into Raleigh?
To some degree, it's a self-reporting system on both sides of it, just like your income tax return is. Someone processes that, and you get a refund back on it. The only way anybody's ever going to catch that is an audit. Now, there are things put in place that they look for, and obviously, if they see something that doesn't look correct, they're going to pull that and look into it. Okay? But on every single one that comes in, it's probably, if there is an error there, if it doesn't get caught then, it's not going to get caught into an audit, because the audit's done.
It just seems to me that there'd be more, like I said, scrutiny on it. I mean, I can submit my taxes in, but I'm not going to make a $2.9 million mistake on mine.
I understand.
If I had, that's probably going to get picked up pretty quick.
And if it was, you got to keep in mind, too, this wasn't like one return. This is 30 months of reporting.
Right. Why don't they match? Why isn't it standardized? What you put in is what you get out. And I mean, it just seems like it should be a pretty automated system.
Keep in mind, if you're the, if you're a retailer, and you sell something to me, and you collect the sales tax, and you remit it, because you're a whole, you're a totally different entity than I am. Now, I turn around and ask for the refund, but I may ask for the refund six months later. So what you're telling the Department of Revenue where to send the money to is not, may not be where I'm telling the Department of Revenue to take the refund from. And that's basically what happened here in that situation.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. That's all the questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Webb. Commissioner Owens?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. You mentioned an example of using 100 buckets. And I'm thinking that you're a little into the fact that each one, each one accounting consisting of 100 counties.
Yes.
You also mentioned that, that a taxpayer could ask for a refund based upon certain. My question is, what qualifies a taxpayer to ask for a refund?
You're basically talking about Pitt County, for example.
Right.
You pay sales tax in, you can ask for it back. Cities and towns can do the same. Nonprofit corporations should qualify, and there's, you know, things in the statute that they have to meet in order to qualify. But if they qualify, the money they pay in, like a church, for example, church pays sales tax when they build a building, or when they buy things, that church can get that money back as a nonprofit. So that's basically what we're talking about.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
I guess my observation is that what you are telling us is that we've got to pay $1.8 million back, and it wasn't our fault, and we don't have any option in the matter other than you are going to let us pay it back over three years.
Unfortunately, that's correct.
Now, that, the thing, that really, really bothers me, because we have just spent many, many, many hours wrestling through our budget, and we finally got one approved last week, and now we got $600,000 expended to in that budget that we do not have budgeted. So that presents a major problem for us. And the other thing that really bothers me about what you have said is that it isn't corrected. It could still happen again. That, those two things bother me.
I understand.
Now, my other point is, this was caught as a result of an audit, right?
That's correct.
A routine audit? Was that a routine audit?
I'm not sure what you mean by routine.
It's something that you do periodically. You do it all the time.
We do audits all the time on all the taxpayers.
So this was just a standard routine audit?
This was, this was one that's, one of the auditors was looking at, a different issue, and they saw that, and that's what started the audit process, yes.
Okay. And that first audit indicated that we owed $4.2 million?
Yes.
And then you did a second audit. Is that right?
And that was not related to this one.
And that gave us a $1.3 million credit, so the net impact is, we owe $2.9?
That's correct.
I would like for you to do a third audit. And see if we can't find another credit.
And we'll try to do it the very best we can.
But now, only if it's credit.
I understand.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes, I missed one or two questions here, but it appeared to me, in looking at this, that the North Carolina General Assembly is in session. And I did hear you say that Pitt County did not make the mistake. And it appears to me that since the North Carolina Department of Revenue at least was a party of this mistake, that you would ask the General Assembly to appropriately refund the money and not ask the County of Pitt to refund the money. That's my solution, that the General Assembly, since the Department of Revenue is a part of the General Assembly of North Carolina, that they make the refund and not the County of Pitt. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Okay. Mr. James?
I guess I'm more involved in any of these evidently. I have a tax exempt number. And everything I buy pertaining to my operations, they deduct my sales tax, and I don't pay it. Why has the state of North Carolina got the same system for these businesses? Because individually, it's already there by the state of North Carolina. Two, approximately three years ago, I received a number from the state of North Carolina pertaining to sales tax. And now I don't pay any. Not only me, but hundreds of thousands of them in Pitt County are that way. Now, why not, that will solve the problem as far as these, it's not individuals, forget the individuals, they're already, they're doing it right. So it's got to be from the biggest outfit in Pitt County, and what is that?
No, we don't, no, we're not going there.
We're not going there. Okay. Oh, I've said enough, but let me say, anybody, even a dumb old man like me can figure it out that they could solve this problem, with just a little common sense.
I cannot disagree with you at all on that.
Of course. I'm right.
Mr. James, did we talk to the secretary about that? And legislation has been introduced on several instances in the past, but there have been lobbyists that have caused that legislation not to get out of the committees of the Senate or the House, that would, in essence, it would allow the nonprofits not to have to pay. It's like you described them for you as an individual, which would help Pitt County government and all local governments across North Carolina, in our estimation of sales taxes, to know what they're going to, when they're going to apply for refunds and what they're going to apply for.
See, most of these don't even know, but my tax number, I've had it put in all businesses, just about in Pitt County, and when I go there, they automatically pull me up and deduct my sales tax.
And like I said.
It's just that simple.
Yeah. In the apartment, from the department's perspective, we spend a lot of resources, again, taking money in that we know we're going to turn it right around and give it back.
You won't have that problem then.
And we would love for that to take place.
Don't you need me to talk to them? They wouldn't listen to me, though.
I'd love for you to talk to them if you'd like.
Yeah. But I understand, and we got the money, and you know what we ought to do. I'm a little different. And I owe something, I believe you're paying it. So might as well face it, but it hurts us very bad.
I understand.
And of course, you know that. But it really does hurt us, and we don't know, you know, it's like you give a child money, and he has to return it. It's bad.
I understand.
That's all I've got to say.
Did you say we got the money? I think I heard you say that.
Well, we owe it, though.
Oh, oh, okay. I just wanted to make sure.
When you owe something, don't you want to pay your bill?
I just wanted to make sure.
Anyway, I'm too, but I want you to know, the state, those people up there need to get off their hiney and solve the problem, and it is so easy to solve. And these lobbyists that you got up there, somebody needs to wake up. I don't know if it's Republicans or the Democrats, or who it is, but they need to wake up and do what's right.
And we have had that dialogue with staff for the General Assembly just recently. We're in conversations with the County Commission Association, the League of Municipalities around that issue as well, because obviously, Pitt County and the cities and towns also pay sales tax in and then have to ask for it back. And that whole process, obviously, from the department's perspective, doesn't work very well.
Look what the state of North Carolina was saved by not having to do this, to budget, cut back, and even be faster and everything. And then I, what I do, I get that money and I spend it right then. So I'm doing good for the economy of the state.
I understand.
I'll be quiet.
Okay, Mr. Owens?
I really don't think there's much I can add, because I want to thank this gentleman for coming down, but he doesn't, he doesn't have the answers that I'd want from my questions if I'd ask him. I don't think he's had the answers from what some of you had. But let me ask you this. You said incorrect returns are made in Pitt County. Is that correct?
The issue here was, the refund request that came in indicated that the refunds that needed to be taken out of different counties, the majority of that should have come from Pitt County, and it came from other counties.
But somebody filed incorrect return, is that correct?
Incorrect refund request, yes.
Have those returns been corrected?
Yes, they have.
All right.
And that's really what's causing this right here, is correcting those refund requests.
I want to say something.
How about the counties that were not receiving the money that they should have received for '07, '08, and '09? You had never had any questions from them about not getting the money that they were supposed to get?
No, because they would not have realized, keep in mind, sales tax is such a volatile tax.
I understand that.
It's constantly changing from one month to the other, due to all these refunds requests, and the money's going in, all that's being done, those types of things. The amount of money would not have been, especially in any given month, enough that that county would have said, this is incorrect. Now, if it had been, if it had been $2.9 million taken out of their bucket in one month, they'd have noticed that. But if you take that, if you take that and divide it by 30 months, that amount taken away from five or six counties, you know, collectively, they're not going to notice that.
What is the repercussion for not paying in 30 months?
Mr. Owens, they will actually deduct.
That ain't, I want him to ask.
I'm sorry.
You've told me one time before.
Well, there's not, there's not really a situation where you're going to be writing a check back to us.
I understand the trade-off.
Yeah, we're deducted out of your each month's sales tax amount.
You take this totality each month regardless of what it was?
And keep in mind also, the 101 bucket that's involved in this, Pitt County will get some of that as well, when we reallocate that particular bucket as part of this reallocation to Pitt County, will get their share of that as well.
Thanks, sir.
So there'll be some positive coming, but it won't offset anywhere near the negative in this situation.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to take a little turn.
No problem.
The Pitt County bucket, over the next 30 months, the sales tax money that's going in there, okay? You're going to take out the $600,000?
We're going to take out the entire amount divided by 30. I think it's, works out to be about $59,000, $60,000.
Okay.
That will be removed on a monthly basis.
Okay.
Yeah.
And if we don't have that in there, you're going to go over to the 101 bucket and make up the difference?
No, you, I mean, you're, yeah, I understand.
I'm just making a suggestion.
I understand.
You said you'd go in the 101 bucket.
We'll go and give you your proportionate share of the 101 bucket based on state law.
Oh, okay. Here we go again, state law and the state legislators. Okay. How many of this type of thing that you know of, this type of audit outcome, say, since 2005 has occurred in the state of North Carolina?
I'd have to get you that, but just as an example.
Do you have an idea?
There's probably 40 times what has happened just with Pitt County. Okay.
Where there's had to be a refund?
Where basically money was given to Pitt County.
Okay.
Because.
Forty, 39 other times?
Yeah. Yeah. Not near to this magnitude.
Okay.
You know, we constantly moving money around, because, and one thing the counties and cities do is they hire reallocators, where you hire someone to go, an outside audit firm, to go and audit this, and then they report to us that, hey, this particular taxpayer reported incorrectly, and we make adjustments based on that.
Okay.
And then basically, you pay them a percentage of what they find.
So one of the things that makes this unique is the amount.
The amount is what makes this so unique, yes.
Okay. But this type of thing happens a lot.
Yes, all the time.
So we really do all need to get busy.
Yes.
On getting this law straight. All of you all need to help him, and help whoever else is in Raleigh on your side. And I know that our commissioners' organization is working hard on it.
Oh, yes.
And just like Commissioner Johnson said, they're in session, it's short session, and we know it. But, you know, some things, I don't know who those lobbyists are, but, you know, maybe we need to get some of them on our side.
We need to hire on evidence. Do some.
Again, Commissioner Johnson, and then the manager wanted to close.
Lobbyists, I was just in Raleigh at two meetings today, and it appears to me that lobbyists have the upper hand with regard to everything that happens in the General Assembly. But anyway, Madam Chair, I would like for our finance officer to address this issue.
Okay, if you have something else you would like to add, Ms. Bryan?
I guess what I would add is, if you will remember when we were doing budget and how difficult it was, what was the word you used, Mr. Garris, wrestling? We put no growth in your sales tax estimate for next year. In fact, we lowered your sales tax estimate going into next year's budget. One, because this year's sales tax estimates weren't performing as we had hoped. But two, because we had had this meeting in hopes of being able to offset the negative impact. The deductions will start coming out of the September distribution, which is the final payment that we accrue backwards into the current fiscal year. Our October forward distributions hit the new fiscal year. They do reallocate quite often. What makes it, Commissioner Owens asked me during the time, if you'll remember, at the same time this allocation issue was going on, we also had the duplicate Article 46 payments coming from the state and the Medicaid swap where we were segueing our taxes to the state and they were taking the Medicaid burden. All of this was happening simultaneously, so as Mr. Baker said, I don't think there's any way the gaining county or the losing county, in terms of the distribution, would have known because there is so much activity inside of that sales tax number, which for us is somewhere close to $20 million a year.
Okay, all right. Mr. Manager, you wanted to close?
I did. Ms. Bryan really kind of said about what I was gonna say.
That's okay. Glad to have you.
But I'll just re-hit her points again. The question has been asked, why couldn't we call it this? You know, $20 million, 14 of which really hits the general fund. But again, probably prior to 2008, we could track sales tax a whole lot easier before the Medicaid swap with the state and we got the quarter cent sales tax option, and then Medicaid went away. But then we also had to hold the towns harmless and cities on that swap. That created some tracking difficulty. And as Ms. Bryan mentioned, we also had, once the quarter cent sales tax was put into place and we started collecting it, we were getting twice the amount that we were supposed to, so they were duplicated, then we were asked to pay those payments back. Again, no fault of our own. Another major issue on tracking the sales tax is the refunds that nonprofits apply for, especially the larger ones. Normally, we count on two of those a year. One instance, I think it was last year, we actually had three large hits in a year when we normally count on two. So the tracking sales tax and also the fact that it's in arrears, like Ms. Bryan was saying, makes it very difficult, especially when these factors are not in our control to track it. So as we've mentioned, we've tried to be very conservative in the July 1, the New Year, sales tax estimation. And that's kind of what I want to conclude with.
Okay. Mr. Hammond?
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chairman. I was going to make this statement and ask him a question. On the 15th of the day, if you operate a business, the sales tax is due, is that correct?
Yes.
And it's due whether you've been paid or not? And I mean, I was in funeral business for many years, and a lot of times, the person who was buried had not paid me nor the sales tax. So the lady at the Department of Revenue, she said, you better set up a way to collect the sales tax if you don't collect nothing else. You don't collect nothing for your casket, your service, your employers or not. 941 is due on your employees, but she was making that option. What, this is a large state from Manayoda, Murfrees, a long ways, 100 counties. And you kept saying, none of this is coming back to Pitt County. So it went out, it went out from Pitt County, is that correct?
The actual tax did come to Pitt County. The sales tax that was collected came to Pitt County.
Stays in Pitt County?
And it was here. What didn't happen was the sales tax that was paid in by the taxpayers that were entitled to the refund did not come out of Pitt County alone. It came out of probably about five or six other counties at least. So those counties never got any money of the money that Pitt County did receive, but we took the money away from them.
So we got the money that some other county was supposed to have collected, had received, is that right?
Well, actually, you got the money you should have received. The refund which should have come away from Pitt County actually came away from other counties, at least part of it did. Part of it did come from Pitt as well. And that's what causes the problem is the money, the money that was paid to Pitt County that was entitled to be refunded should have come from Pitt County. Instead, it came from other counties as well, and that's basically the reallocation issue.
One of the previous commissioners before me said this, it was not Pitt County's error.
It was not Pitt County's error, that's correct.
Okay, Mr. Baker, I will thank you for coming and being so gracious.
Glad to try to answer your questions. If you have any more, let us know. I will say.
But your answers will be the same.
Unfortunately, the answers will be the same on this issue, but keep in mind, we are here to try to help. We are, Local Government Vision is there to try to serve local governments. We do manage all your refunds, all your sales tax money, and so we try to get it right. We do have obligation when we find something wrong. The counties, again, that didn't get the, that lost the money shouldn't have, we have obligation to them as we would Pitt County if it was, if the situation were reversed.
We understand. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Really seriously, Commissioner Garris asked a question that you might do it a third time, and if we came out good, you would give it to us?
Yes, and we'll.
That'll give him a little something to do when he gets back.
We'll try to get James working on that back there.
Yeah, I mean, really, we do need help. And if it don't come out good for us, you'll just lose that.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Mr. Owens had one other comment, and this is gonna be it.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You made the remark that Director for Sales Tax was appointed back some months to whatever back ago. Was this a result of finding this problem?
No, the, what I referred to was Local Government Division was developed a year and a half ago.
Yeah, that's right.
This was brought to my attention, it had already taken place before I took over the Local Government Division. I was asked basically to fix it, clean it up, and see if we couldn't find a solution going forward, and that's what we're working on.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Owens. Thank you again, Mr. Baker.
Thank you.
And our next item is public addresses to the board, and we don't have anyone sign up. And I'm not gonna ask if there's anybody out there that's got second thoughts. Okay, the next item or items will report from our manager, and he's gonna be in high gear.
Madam Chairman, I have a report.
We can read it anyhow.
That's right.
Your next meeting date is July 9, and if you recall, as your manager will be out of town that week at the Pella Workshop with the school government, the Public Executive Leadership Academy. Your Deputy County Manager, Chief Financial Officer will be sitting in for me that night and actually will be her last month with the county, so she will have the opportunity to be in the hot seat. The NCC conference is July 13 through 17 in Allegheny County, Pennsylvania. The NCACC, which is August 16 through 19 in Wake County. Didn't want to list, the county has received a number of medical center foundation grants, and these are as follows: A crosswalk for the county at the County Home, on County Home Road at the district park to serve the park and the farmer's market area, the Village of Yesteryear, that's $4,800. AEDs for the Sheriff's Department, that was a $50,000 grant that will primarily be used, as I understand it, to put in squad cars. We have a $5,000 grant for the medical dental care needs within conjunction with a tenure plan to end chronic homelessness. We received a $32,000 grant for our Community Guard Initiative out adjacent to the district park. And lastly, we received $24,950 for Healthy Communities Food Nutrition Program, call for extension. The last item out of my head was, there has been a letter of recognition written for Ernest C. Adams, Jr., who is a former Pitt County native, for his accomplishments, that's been assigned, has been signed by the chairman, and I believe will be presented by Commissioner McLawhorn at a convention in town for funeral directors and morticians. But we do have that, and if you'd like, we could read it, otherwise we just make mention of it. Other than that, we then have the tax collector.
Okay, if you'll come forward, Mr. Baker.
Move we approve this report. Second?
And we will just let you say where we're standing right now compared to?
Well, I've got better news.
Oh, okay. Just as long as it's short.
It's short. The May 2012 combined collection rate of 96.56% is ahead of both the May 2011 rate of 95.17% and the May 2010 rate of 95.96%.
How much money?
Very good news. Thank you.
I like the money.
Look on the back, James.
It's on your sheet.
Okay.
Two years, we're on your sheet.
On your sheet. Okay, we have a motion to approve the report. Is there a second?
Second.
About a second? Okay, let's vote please for approval. Thank you, and thank you for the good news. Okay, I lost my place. Okay, James?
More good news, real quickly, even from the planning department. The community rating system reclassification, we have Maureen O'Shea here tonight from the state. Again, this is good news for those citizens that actually reside or have property in the floodplain. This actually, with some of the efforts here by the county in implementing its hazard mitigation plan, a lot of different activities associated with that, we're able to lower insurance premiums. This is lowering down from eight to a seven, which is a good thing. Also wanted to recognize Brian Jones, he's the county's certified floodplain manager. That's a big deal because we try to ensure that folks stay out of harm's way, and he reviews every permit that comes through. So with that, I wanted to bring forward Maureen, just for a few words for you tonight.
Good evening. I'm Maureen O'Shea. I'm with the North Carolina Emergency Management. I'm the National Flood Insurance Program Planner for Eastern North Carolina. And this evening, I'm here to recognize and commend Pitt County on behalf of North Carolina Emergency Management and FEMA for their excellent floodplain practices for unincorporated Pitt County. Pitt County joined the National Flood Insurance Program in 1980 in an emergency status, and they regularly entered the program January 6, 1983. And what that did was it made flood insurance, national flood insurance, available to the citizens of Pitt County that choose to buy it whether they live in a flood zone or not. Your current maps were adopted May 16 of 2008. Currently, you have 525 policies in force in unincorporated Pitt County. That's $111 million worth of flood insurance in force. To date, you've had 259 flood insurance loss claims, that's since 1978. And your total losses that have been paid on these flood insurance claims is $8,106,734. The CRS program, Community Rating Service program, is a voluntary program that the commissioners back in the day adopted and agreed to participate in, and it adopts higher standards for floodplain management. The goal is greater safety, as James stated. It reduces your property losses because you build up and out of the floodplain, and you are awarded points for activities that result in these reduced rates for your citizens. The citizens that will be, the 15% reduction that they'll be receiving this year is about $20,000 worth of reduced premiums, and that is 246 policyholders will get a reduced premium effective October 1. So not too shabby a number there. And some of the activities that staff do in order to get this benefit for the citizens is they maintain elevation certificates that are required for flood insurance and for the building inspections department in perpetuity so that it's available to any property owner at that property in the future. They give information to the public on an as-needed basis when they call for information regarding flood maps, am I in a flood zone, that kind of thing. They do outreach projects. They provide flood protection information. They have them available in the reference section at the Shepherd Memorial Library. They are cooperating technical partner with FEMA. You have an open space, credit is provided for approximately 272 acres in the special flood hazard area that is dedicated open space. You have higher regulatory standards that you get for the free board you have and for the BSEG's classification with the building code. Stormwater management receives 92 points for their drainage and soil erosion projects. You have floodplain management planning that gets, and then you have acquisition and relocation that you have purchased land, as was noted in that earlier, through the hazard mitigation program up in that area we heard hearing about earlier. When you do acquire properties, you receive additional points, and you have a good drainage maintenance system here. And so all of these things lead to a benefit for these property owners. 279 policies that you have here are not located in a special flood hazard area. Those people are choosing to purchase flood insurance at a very reduced rate in order to protect their property because, as we know, most of you do know from Floyd back in the day, Mother Nature did not read the map, and she flooded where she chose to. So flood insurance is always, you know, encouraged whether you're in the flood zone or not. So again, North Carolina Emergency Management and FEMA commend your elected officials yourselves and then for your higher standards that you've adopted into your local ordinances. And then we commend staff for the practice of it, the practical application with the customers at the front line. And so a nice plaque we'll be coming forth with when our office receives it, we'll bring it into James's office. So thank you.
Well, without the plaque here, we'll thank you for coming and presenting that information. And before we applaud, I'd like Mr. Jones and Mr. Rose to come, because like, stand up, because at least, yes, it is good news, and it's an ongoing effort. Thank you. It's easy to sit back, get the plan out there, and not keep looking at it and upgrading it, and we appreciate the effort of doing that, and thank you. We hope to see you back here again soon. Next, we have Shelley Leach. Ms. Leach?
We wanted to share with the board an award the county received from the National Center for Civic Innovation. This award acknowledges the completion of work required as a grantee of the Government Performance Reporting Trailblazer Grant Program. Pitt County was one of 12 other governing bodies across the United States and Canada to receive this award to improve performance reporting. Our first issue was released in September 2011, and we plan to continue annual updates with our next issue coming this fall, if you remember receiving that.
And I think we can give you all a round of applause. Thank you. 12 out of the United States and Canada is pretty big. Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve the considered agenda. Let's vote. And if you'll vote for Mr. McLawhorn, I'm sure he would, if you'd be his proxy. And we have two items for discussion tonight, and the first one up is Dr. Massey. And I don't know whether you wanted to introduce anything or not.
Yes, if I could, as Dr. Massey is approaching the podium. Pitt Community College is coming before you tonight, seeking authorization to proceed with their Vernon White project on the PCC campus. And this will be utilizing the quarter cent sales tax proceeds. I did ask, Dr. Massey and Dr. Emery held a meeting about two weeks back to discuss remaining projects on the table for the Board of County Commissioners' consideration and where we're at on the leveraging capacity for quarter cent. So it makes sure everybody was on the same table in terms of knowing who is moving forward with what. So that's really what, Dr. Massey is on the agenda for this ongoing project that he's been pursuing. And Dr. Emery had asked to be on afterwards to respond for school system needs as well. So with that, there's other things I could say, but at this point, I think I'll just turn over Dr. Massey.
Okay, Dr. Massey?
Mr. Manager, members of the commission, yes. It's my pleasure to speak to you tonight on the ongoing facilities progress at Pitt Community College. I'd like to recognize in the audience from Pitt Community College, our board chair, Paul Davenport, our vice president for administrative services for a while longer, Susan Everett, and Ricky Brown, our business manager.
Welcome. Thank you.
This is a busy time of the year for Pitt Community College because, as has been said several times here today, it is General Assembly time, yes. The General Assembly is in short session, and we have been working hard to bring resources from Raleigh back to Pitt County. And so far, so good. We'll see how it ends up. I wanted to talk with you specifically about the Vernon White Building. Vernon White Building is the oldest building on the campus, originally called the Classroom and Administration. originally called the Classroom and Administration Building. It housed classrooms, workshop labs, lab areas, a library, bookstore, student lounge, administrative offices and storage with thirty-seven thousand four hundred and twenty square feet. First classes were held there in September nineteen sixty-four. And this picture here has the first president of Pitt Tech then, Lloyd Spalding, who's looking at the construction of the Vernon White Building in this photo. Trustees moved to transform the breezeway between the two separate buildings. There was actually a fairier operation that we were running, training horseshoeing in that area in the early sixties. But they finally said, we've got to close off this breezeway in nineteen sixty-five. Board Chair Robert Lee Humber, Jr., stated at that time that Pitt Tech led all forty-four community colleges, not fifty-eight, but there were only forty-four at that time, in space utilization, which means, yes, forty-five years ago, Pitt was the most crowded of all North Carolina colleges and remains so to this day. In nineteen eighty-one, the building was renamed the Vernon White Building after the former state senator and county board member who served on the Pitt Community College Board of Trustees from nineteen sixty-three to nineteen eighty-nine. So he has been our longest-serving, or he was our longest-serving Board of Trustees members, although Mr. Redrick is fast catching up with him. I came to you in two thousand nine and two thousand ten stating that the vacating of the large automotive technology and building construction programs to the new building would be a good time to renovate this structure and you approved a design contract with architect Jimmy Height in two thousand and ten. If you look at the picture on the screen, you'll notice the Vernon White Building, that's kind of to the, it's actually to the south, but it's on the upper part of the photo. The Humber Building is below it. And you can see at the very bottom of the slide, everybody knows, you know what that is? There at the very bottom of those kind of areas? That's the Tice Drive-In Theater. The Tice Drive-In Theater, that before your time, Beth Ward, I know. But these were the good old days and this was the whole campus right here of Pitt Tech. Bids on the three Bowen Farm Buildings, that's the buildings that you just approved, that you approved a few years ago and we're just opening now. That's the Construction Industrial Technology Building, the Facility Services Building, and the soon-to-be-open Charles Russell Classroom Building. Those came in five million dollars lower than the expected twenty-seven million projected cost in October two thousand and ten. So that was a great, great news. Pitt Community College certainly felt that the Vernon White plans were moving forward. The new space will house the growing Electrical Electronics Technology Program. That's the new space in the Vernon White Building that we renovated. That serves over seventy-eight majors. They are currently in the Catherine Witcher Building, which is right in back of the Vernon White Building. Just as importantly, this move will free up space for expanding the Heating and Air Conditioning Program, one of our industrial tech leaders with seventy majors, and our Advertising and Graphic Arts Communications Program with over a hundred majors. The size at Pitt Community College has just put so much pressure on these spaces. So we'll move across the alley with Electrical Electronics and we'll let the programs breathe a bit more in the Witcher Building, which will enable us to serve more students. We will also move the Horticulture Program, which is now on County Home Road. You may not really be that familiar with it, but across from the farmer's market, we will move it back to campus from its current location and we will open it to a broader audience. We've done surveys which show that that program, greenhouse program and horticulture, has a demand for workers in this area and we will be expanding it and it will move into part of this space also. We are prepared to go to bids in July, which would position us to begin work in October. As Vernon White is the oldest building on this, a little bit behind. This is the back, on the right side is the back of the, turned around here. That's the back of the Vernon White Building. On the left side is the Witcher Building. And this shot, by the way, is from the second story of the Witcher Building. You see kind of an aerial view of the Vernon White Building. You can see that has a flat roof, the Vernon White Building. But that's pretty much the whole span of the back of that building. The major focus of the renovation is the HVAC system in the Vernon White Building and a new roof. But we will also do major modifications to the plumbing, help bring it closer to ADA compliance, and changes to the instructional spaces. We will also create a better center for campus information technology. This project also will respond directly to issues that have been identified in the State Energy, the State Energy Report that we received this spring, which identified Pitt Community College as one of the largest users of energy within the community college system. The Vernon White Building is one of the prime violators of that energy inefficiency. So we're looking forward to actually benefiting you by not having as high utility costs for the Vernon White Building. Now, I received this past Friday a letter from Superintendent Beverly Emery with concerns about our project. Pitt Community College's enrollment increases since sales tax referendum passed in two thousand and seven have been over thirty-five percent. We have gained that many students just since two thousand and seven, while Pitt County Schools has grown very little during that period. Pitt Community College has no other public sources for construction programs. PCC is still tremendously overcrowded, even with its new buildings. We're still number fifty-eight out of fifty-eight community colleges. The Vernon White Project is not a new one. We have come to the commissioners several times to talk with you about this. And it was a major recommendation of our two thousand and nine master plan for facilities. Excuse me. We have never questioned projects proposed by Pitt County Schools. I would be glad to answer any questions that you have either now or after Superintendent Emery's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Massey. Would you all like to ask some questions now?
I think it'd be good to hear from the outside.
Come in here, bud, okay? Thank you. And we'll be calling you back up, I'm sure. Next, Dr. Emery, if you'll come forward, or any of your entourage?
Thank you all very much and we appreciate the timing here since we're between two meetings tonight. Let me just start out by saying that we never envisioned when we collaborated together working on a quarter penny sales tax that this would ever be anything other than a collaboration. And so I do want to say upfront tonight that we are not here to advocate against another educational institution's funding, but we are here to advocate that no money be spent right now in a questionable economic time. And our rationale for that is that we have voluntarily put a project aside knowing that the revenue is not there for the sales tax and feel that to be silent at this point in time pushes that project back to two thousand and twenty. And I'm going to ask Erin quickly to show you why we can't be silent on this issue.
Thank you. Good evening. It's with pleasure tonight that I come to speak to you about a small portion of the needs of Pitt County Schools. We too have presented our long-range facility reports both in two thousand and three and two thousand and nine. Both times, those reports totaled over two hundred million dollars of needs for the overall school district. In trying to be good stewards and good partners within the boundaries in which we work, I think we've only brought forward a portion of our needs. But those needs continue to grow over time as we try to access small portions of us as we move forward. As Dr. Emery spoke, I'd like to go through just a couple of quick slides to point out some of our needs. Chikad School, not to pick on Dennis, but I don't know if we had anyone around in nineteen twenty-nine to take this picture of when this original park was constructed, but Chikad's original two-story construction is nineteen twenty-nine. We still continue to house students in that on a daily basis, a hundred and eighty days, seven and a half hours a day. It has taken us a long time to get to this point with just Chikad School. We have added on to Chikad School in every decade since nineteen twenty-nine except for the sixties. So you think about that. That is a large number of additions to what started out as a first grade through twelfth grade entity. Within that as well, we have ADA requirements that are not being met. We have wooden staircases. We have a second story, which is not handicap accessible. We have second-floor classrooms that sit over the top of the media center that not only are on the second floor, but also have stairs, wooden stairs, up to the classrooms. We have window AC units, radiator heat and ceiling fans in those classrooms. We have gymnasium stage for a school that is occupied by almost nine hundred students this year and has been as high as almost eleven hundred students. That is adequately undersized. The same for the cafeteria. The current cafeteria starts serving students lunch at ten-thirty a.m. in order to get all the kids through that facility within that time period. We have a number of ceiling issues. We have issues within the original structure. But it sometimes becomes the point of how much money do you continue to invest in nineteen twenty-nine construction, nineteen twenty-nine structure that eventually becomes not money that's well-spent. We brought over a twelve-classroom modular unit in order to try to alleviate some of the crowding in that school and allow us to move forward in what is a three-part construction project. We have completed Phase One. That was at approximately two-point-six-million-dollar investment. You know, and as part of your agenda tonight, you approved two and a half million dollars of sewer to be run to Chikad School. So we have over five million dollars in the infrastructure supporting Chikad School. Phase Two and Phase Three will bring the classroom new construction to that facility. We have committed to our architect, which is the same that Pitt Community College uses, for the design and the renovations of through Phase Three. We are owing that architect an additional one million dollars for design work that has already been designed for Phase Two and Phase Three. Again, I point out to you with Phase One, we changed some of the traffic patterns. We relocated ball fields. We provided some of the infrastructure underground that allows us to move forward with Phase Two and Three. What you see to the far right is the final plan, which will reorientate that school. It will turn it around. It will take down the nineteen twenty-nine construction and eventually give us what we believe would be the better part of a brand-new school out to Chikad Campus. In addition to that, our next priority project would be A.J. Cox. That's nineteen thirty-six construction. We still have mobile units on that campus. And in addition to that, we still have seventy-five mobile units across the county. We've reduced that number by seventy-five units over the last four years, but we still maintain seventy-five modular classrooms for students. We have a number of deficiencies within that school, which has also occupied as many as eleven hundred kids. Within that schematic plan that we've worked with our architect on, we'd like to bring them onsite with parking, stacking, actually take them off the public streets and move them internal to their campus. As I mentioned before, we operate thirty-five campuses with three-point-five-million-square-feet of heated space. Our Facility Service Department works out of basically a temporary structure. They have a warehouse that is actually housed on the A.J. Cox Campus, an HVAC electrical department that serves those thirty-five campuses, working out of a structure of approximately about six hundred square feet for the electric department and six hundred square feet for the HVAC department. We also have a need for a new bus garage. Our current bus garage has five bays and serves almost three hundred buses. It parks over two hundred buses during the summer period and has to maintain its inventory slash parts room on the second story of the current structure. You can see some of the inadequate facilities at the bus garage as well. And that basically summarizes some of our needs and I turn it back over to Dr. Emery at this point.
Thank you, Erin. We just wanted to make the point that we still have serious classroom space needs. We are grateful for the opportunity to have been building at times when no one around the state has been able to do that, the fact that we have the quarter cent sales tax. As Dr. Massey mentioned, we did have some other sources of funds. As you well know, lottery dollars, a portion of them were designated to public school building funds. We have had those reduced by two-thirds. We have not wanted to borrow off money that we knew was not a steady revenue or that we couldn't count on. And as you also know, we have lost the seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand in capital that we have had a long-time relationship with you as commissioners as a part of an effort to not lose our low-wealth funding in the operational budget. So our resources to deal with the capital issues have been greatly limited. As Erin mentioned, we too have a huge investment in the Chikad Project. We were ready to go out to bid last fall and we looked at the revenue. We looked at the carryover we had. We looked at the county's carryover. And we said, we can't do this because we cannot put ourselves nor the county in a position of getting to the end of a loan or to debt and not have the dollars to pay the debt off. And at that point, we discussed it with our board and said, despite the fact that we have this need, we sort of need to go into a holding pattern until we see what the economy is going to do and what happens with the quarter cent sales tax revenues over time. And so, again, we don't feel good being here looking like we're trying to shoot down someone else's project. But it's our job to advocate for the needs of our school system and we also just cannot stand back and say it's okay to put off the needs of a nineteen twenty-nine and a nineteen thirty-six classroom structure until two thousand and twenty. So we thank you for that and too are happy to answer questions you might have.
Thank you. And we appreciate both of you coming and presenting this to us tonight. Do we want to start with discussion or do you just want to raise your hand if you have a question? And tell me who you have the question of.
I have a question, but I'll give you my comment.
Okay, Ms. Owens?
I want to commend Dr. Massey and his staff for the great job they did about the twenty-seven million he talked about. In fact, the bids coming in five million less and we all thought at that time that that was going to probably be sufficient to renovate the White Building that he's alluded to here. But it has not been. The economic situation is such now that I don't, I think everything's going to be on, have to be on hold. My personal view is this, that I've always felt that public schools took priority over technical schools and community colleges. The funding of public schools, I think, is within the storid place of the commissioners versus community colleges. And I relate that to the fact that family-wise, if you've got a six-year-old child and an eighteen-year-old child, that eighteen-year-old can earn something for himself and carries on way, but that six has got to be taken care of. way, but that six has got to be taken care of. I think our public schools, K through 12, has to be taken care of first. And as we look at the suggestion here, or not suggestion, but analysis by our county manager that says that if we, if the White Project is funded by bank loan or pay-as-you-go, that it'd be, nothing would be allowed for the Pitt County Public Schools until 2020. And I just can't see how we can live with that. So having said that, I think that we just, we need to wait and see where we're going. And in fact, we just previously discussed tonight a big issue that this board is going to have to face and confront. And it hurts me to say that, but it doesn't hurt me to say which my priority is, and that's the public schools.
Okay. Mr. James and Ms. Hammond.
Commissioner Owens just about said, but I think both of them tonight told it the way that it was, and there is great needs for both of them, but I think we're going to have to put it on hold for the time being. I think Commissioner Owens said it very well.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hammond?
Yes, ma'am. I thought there was some stimulus money ready when we first heard about these constructions at these two schools, and that period has expired. Is there still any funds available, or are all the stimulus money gone?
Mr. Hammond, the school system, Pitt County Schools, did use stimulus money for the Seti Salter renovation addition, and that was interest-free dollars. Actually, we pay the principal in the interest and apply for a refund with the interest to the federal government, but those dollars have been expended, and stimulus dollars are gone.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Garris?
I think that both, Dr. Emery and Dr. Massey, both of you guys have done a tremendous job. I really, I really think that, and I really appreciate both of you working with us, recognizing that funds are limited. And I don't want to do anything that would jeopardize the great working relationship that we have as a community. But I do think that we do need to kind of set back now and think through this because we all knew that one day this day would come, that the sales tax money would be committed. And we need to set back and think through exactly how much money we have left to work with, and then what the priorities are for us as a board, because in the final analysis, it's got to be our decision. We have 23,000 students in K through 12, and we have 11,000 students at...
20,000.
20,000.
Yes, sir.
At Pitt Community, and that's a lot of people that we are trying to service, and we just need to make sure that we're doing the best we can.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Garris. Anyone else?
Yeah, I would like to hear the county manager make the presentation here.
Okay, we were going to let him finish up. Any other commissioners that have any questions? Okay.
Okay, great. Thank you, Dr. Johnson. On this matter, I first want to report that in terms of since the quarter cent sales tax has been put into place, Pitt County has been able to leverage almost $64 million, actually $63,597,500 in construction for Pitt County Schools and Pitt Community College. For Pitt County Schools, it's $41,097,500, and for the community college, it's $22,500,000. The split on that is 65% going towards the Pitt County Schools and 35% to the community college. In your agenda package on pages 90 and 91, I did illustrate with the help of our finance director, two financing scenarios for the community college projects, since that is the project that's brought before you. One is the pay-as-you-go project where you're actually paying cash for the renovations of Vernon White, and the other was a bank loan over 20 years. Both scenarios, as Commissioner Owens pointed out, does have a negative effect on Pitt County Schools' ability then to pursue the Chikad Project as well as even think about A.G. Cox further down the road. One thing, an additional step of analysis that we conducted was, we looked at our overall debt tables for all of our projects, all of our bonds, all of our borrowings, and looked to see when is the next amount of monies that would pay off, and there was a chunk of money paying off in 2017. So we were really trying to back into, is there any way we could do both projects through instead of a bank loan, through a conventional COPS borrowing or LOB, limited obligation borrowing? So we looked at a scenario of a $13 million borrowing that would take into account the community college, as well as take into account $14 million for the Chikad Campus. Now, that made an assumption of an 800-student campus versus going a 1,000-student campus. Even if you do that, $7 million would come from the quarter cent sales tax plus the $5 million for the Pitt Project, which would be quarter cent sales tax-related. Where the rub came in or the difficulty, the other $7 million has to come from Article 4042, which is restricted sales tax for the school system, which is limited. It will be paying off in the 2017 period, but then, as Dr. Emery pointed out, through the county's budget, you've taken their Capital I, II, III dollars and eliminated those, so they're having to deal with that in the short term of trying to reallocate dollars. And I think they're going to have freedom of capacity that could have paid the debt service on the $7 million, but now that we've cut their budget back, we don't. So things are too much up in the air to pursue even a $19 million borrowing at this point in time. So it's either you fund Vernon White, either pay-as-you-go or a bank loan at 20 years, or basically you delay it all for a year and see what the economy does, and also see where we land on our feet a year from now as we develop next year's budget to see. I would speculate the school system is going to be asking the county to reinstitute the $750,000 for Capital I, II, and III, which I have no idea to even whether the county's tax base is going to grow to accommodate that or not in the following year. Yes, they can rely upon their $4 million-plus fund balance they have for that need, probably in it for a year or two, but eventually, some consideration will need to be made for giving that back. So that's kind of my analysis, if you follow that.
Okay. Any questions to the manager?
Well, do we have to decide tonight? Of course, you know how we're going to do. I mean, what everybody said.
I think that, if I can speak for Dr. Massey, and he may want to interject, that the push for the community colleges on their project is, if they're going to let bids in July and receive the bids in October, they're on a timeframe where they would like to complete the project by the fall of 2013 for all the chips to fall into place in terms of the leases they need to execute now to move off space classrooms and so forth, so the class entering the classroom space, which is 40% of the Vernon White Building, could then occupy in the fall of 2013. So if you don't do it now, then it kind of messes that schedule up. If you delay it a year, then I guess it would be, if you were to act a year from now, it would be the fall of 2014.
Okay. Dr. Massey?
Could I respond to that?
Yes.
First off, the Vernon White Building has 42% in instructional and student services, direct services. County Manager Elliott is correct that it would delay the project. It will also force us to figure out what exactly to do with the back of the Vernon White Building, since it's been vacated. And there's very little that we can do to retrofit that building to accommodate the overcrowded Catherine Witcher Building. We'll start working on that, if that is your pleasure, but I would like to respond to something Commissioner Owens said about the priorities of the county. We've heard a lot about jobs and how important that is in our economy, and how important it is not just to serve the 18-year-old, but the 28-year-old, the 45-year-old, the 60-year-old who's coming back to get trained to prepare for the jobs that are out there now. That's our priority. That's what we need to do. And a second comment, as I said very briefly, we did not have a chance to comment on the projects the 42 million the Pitt County Schools have expended to this date. We feel like we got to the table a little late on this project, having spent only $22 million. So I hope that in the future, the commissioners will allow us to discuss and consider what priorities there are for individual projects in advance. So we won't expend $300,000 for architect fees, and we won't have done all this preparation that we were, you know, doing for the Vernon White Project.
Any other questions with Dr. Massey while he's up?
What I'm concerned with, I'm certain I'm for jobs, job training, and nothing should interfere with that. But you have a much higher percentage of them now going to junior, it's a junior college to a certain degree. That concerns me very much, the amount of space that we're having built for these people and send them. And Pitt County is not in the business to have a junior college. I don't think we are. We didn't intend it when, well, I didn't intend it when we voted. So I think we've got to consider all of these things, but I think still that we're going to have to, I think we need to look at it, really do.
Okay. I think it's really important that we're reminded about the number of students. I think we were a little surprised to find the 20,000, some of us, at the community college.
That's credit and non-credit students.
Right, I understand. And the 22,000, how close that is together as far as numbers are concerned. And I think what you just said, Dr. Massey, as far as maybe, since this has been a collaborative effort in the, from the get-go, from the very beginning, that what has taken place here today, when we consider another project from either the public schools or the community college, that we make sure that we see what's coming down the pipe for both, and that both groups get to speak to the issues when they come forward. So I don't know if the commissioners want to make a motion or if you want to wait until our next meeting.
For the purposes of getting it before the totality of the board, I move that we wait on these projects.
Okay.
Second?
A time limit, Ms. Owens, when we revisit it?
Well, second?
The manager has given projections of growth, but he had those figures as to what growth was going to be. None of us know. I wish we all did know.
But I was just thinking that we're revisiting it in a year and looking at where we were.
I don't even know that you want it restricted to a time, Madam Chair.
Okay, that it may be before then.
Because of the unknowns that we have.
Maybe longer.
Might be sooner.
Not before that.
Okay. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Mr. Hammond.
Yep, we got, oh, yeah.
Okay, Mr. Hammond already seconded it. Okay. Any comments? Okay, it passes, and thank you both for coming forward and speaking to us tonight on these Our next item or items for decision, and Mr. McGlaughlin?
I'm sorry, Madam Chairman, under, items for discussion, you got the GPAT, the third item.
I was going to put it, I said, under decision.
I'm sorry.
That's where I was coming. That's okay. Thank you. Mr. McGlaughlin, you were going to speak to a motion on GPAT?
Yes, ma'am. We had talked about GPAT considerably, and I would like to make a motion at this time that we fund $3,500 for GPAT to stay on the air.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
I'd like to hear from Mr. Elliott. It seemed to me, as I recall, there were state funds that was going to come into that and something else, but I don't recall the specifics merely.
The way it was, Pitt County government in the past had appropriated $16,000 per year to GPAT, and as part of the budget process, my recommendation was that we had cut that out, which the Board of Commissioners did do. At the same time, the City of Greenville was receiving $12,500 more in PEG channel dollars, which they were going to be passing along to Channel 23. So instead of them getting $20,000 from the City of Greenville, they'd get $32,500. So the difference between, the difference is $3,500 of what is what they're short of to keep, to hold them harmless. So I think what Commissioner McGlaughlin is suggesting is that $3,500 from contingency out of the new budget beginning July 1 be appropriated to GPAT.
That you recommend that?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I value it.
Just a moment, please, Mr. Garris.
I believe the $3,500 would, in essence, go to create their fund balance so that it would be at the same level it was last year.
Correct. They'll still have a net profit as they show, but they say they need that for, if equipment breaks down.
I understand. You know, I think that they are doing a good job. We have four public access stations, and, you know, we have just got through having a major discussion with Pitt Community and with K through 12, and we have been talking about how tight funds are. We cannot fund them everything they need. We went through the same discussion with the Sheriff's Department, and I really have a problem. I know $3,500 isn't that much money, but I really have a problem in light of the things that we cannot fund to fund this $3,500 so that they can have a fund balance, as I understand. That's my comment.
Okay. Did you have your head up, Mr. Drunt?
Yes, I...
I thought you did, then I've got you, Mr. Chair.
I thought we went through this in our previous discussions, and if, I don't hear anything new information from the county manager. He did not recommend that $3,500 before, and we took a vote on the budget, and we didn't have it in there. And I, in fact, I think we voted that down as a part of the discussion on the budget.
Okay. Mr. James?
Well, in effect, we'll, we'll, they go right on. This goes into fund balance. They don't really need it to operate. Is that right?
At the end of the day, they have a $67,500, actually $69,200. If you appropriate the $3,500, that'll give them a $1,200 leeway, so if anything breaks down, that they can have in their savings would be the net difference in, between their income and their expenditures.
I thought you said that the City of Greenville went to $32,000.
That's correct.
Come back again. Well, what are you going on? What you mean? That gives them more money. Or am I, did I hear wrong?
I'm saying at the end of the day, their, what they show on their, the bottom of their net profit would be $1,287, because you're still getting the same $16,000, $12,500 from the city and additional PEG channel dollars, $3,500 from the county.
What is it, the $32,000 come in that you said something?
$20,000 is what the city's always passed as part of PEG channel dollars. The additional $12,500 is $32,500. Or you could leave it and not appropriate it, and then tell them if something breaks down, they could come to you for consideration, either...
The other point that I made during the budget presentation, that I kind of got the impression wasn't received very well, was that they need to be actively involved in some fundraising efforts, I think.
I do want to point out that our staff, PIO staff and myself, are going to meet, along with the City of Greenville's Assistant City Manager and PIO, is going to meet with the GPAT Board this Thursday at their board meeting to discuss the current contract, discuss their operations, our expectations and such. And fundraising is one of those items on the agenda.
So you're going to meet, well, so, and we haven't given them any money, so the $3,500...
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
You know, this is almost ridiculous. You know, you talk about this county, $3,500 is nothing, and you're talking about the effect that it has on, that it would have on people who are confined to their homes, who are sick, shedding, and trying to help these individuals to just have a listening venue for something that I think is very beneficial. I think this is just, you know, this is asinine. I don't understand why we just don't do this. It's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Johnson?
Where would the money come from, Mr. County Manager?
Would it come out of the board's contingency for next year?
I, I think we had a very lenient contingency. How much did we have?
Actually, you've got $272,500 in contingency for the year.
Anyone else?
Madam Chair?
Yes. Ms. Hammond?
I think we really need to take up courage.
Since 1998, since I've been on this board, we have curtailed our donations to every nonprofit, almost in Pitt County, to almost all of them. We're just about wiped the slate clean of, of heaven nonprofits. And the manager said that the fund that, that, that has come in, you could, you could take this amount out of it, is that correct?
Of the 16,000 that was cut, they're, they will receive 12,500 that will backfill it, so there's still the, the delta of $3,500 that they, that they believe they, they still need.
Okay, no other comments? Okay, let's take a vote. And the motion is to take the $3,500 out of contingency in our next year's budget to fund it fully, which it already is funded fully minus $1,200, correct? Based on their budget.
It's fully funded minus $3,500.
Okay. All right, let's vote. And our next item, I'm sorry, is, thank you very much, is the request for fund balance use, Pitt Community College.
Move or approve the request?
Second.
Okay, let's vote, please, unless there's discussion.
It's what issue?
The request for fund balance use for Pitt Community College of 175, 175,000, it's in our.
Page 93.
Page 93 in our agenda, and it's their fund balance.
Correct.
Any other questions? Okay, let's vote. Even can you get, Mr. James?
James?
You're writing a check for 170,000. This is a request for the community college to use 175,000 of their fund balance. Okay, thank you, thank you. Our next item, Florida, our amendments to the Pitt County Personnel Ordinance.
Good evening. We think these are two fairly minor changes to the ordinance that we're requesting. The first one is the matter in which employees use a compensatory time. We're just requesting that we add the piece to the policy that requires them to use any bank compensatory time prior to using any personal time. I think it'll help department heads in administering that piece of it. And then the second piece of the ordinance change is a disciplinary suspension without pay. We'd like to reduce that requirement of one full work week to three full working days. We had some requests from department heads to make that change, as well as the piece on the compensatory time.
Okay, thank you.
Move or approve?
Second.
Any questions, comments, let's vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item, Phil Dickerson. This is a resolution for acceptance of the state loan for the Chicag School pump stations.
Move or approve it? We've read it.
Second.
Yes.
Any questions?
I want to credit.
Yes.
Is Greenville, you tell us it's paying anything on it?
$480,000.
How much did, wait a minute, this is where I go. How much did they pay for the Bell Bowl Pump Station when they brought out that?
I don't know.
How much did the pump station cost?
The Bell Bowl Pump Station?
No, 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 forget that, that's been too many years ago. How much did the one at Chicag cost?
It's on 101.
Oh, it's on that?
Total is 2.5 million, that's a million dollars from.
You, you can't get it?
Outside sources.
Okay. All right, that's all right, nobody else concerned about it? I know if I'm able to give somebody $5 million a year, I'm able to come in here a little bit stronger. I'm not that stupid, though. We need to be concerned about that.
It did start at 200,000, so we got.
So you got the 400?
What's 400?
Okay, if there are no other comments, I'll let's vote, please.
What we vote on now, Madam Chairman, I don't understand.
We are now going to Melanie Bryan.
Mr. Hammond wasn't sure what he was voting on.
Okay, Mr. Hammond, that's the acceptance of the state loan for the Chicag School pump stations.
We voted for it, didn't we?
I know, but Mr. Hammond just asked me and he hasn't voted.
Oh, oh, oh.
What you said, we're voting on for, for Chicag School now?
Yes, the acceptance.
Then I already voted on that, Madam Chair.
No, sir, everyone asked, but you have not.
You just vote for all against.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Ms. Bryan?
And the item I have is to ask you to adopt a resolution authorizing the filing of an application with the local government commission for a guaranteed energy savings contract. As the county engineer has brought to you over the last six to eight months, we have looked at our facilities for improvements that we can make. You borrow the money and then the savings from the improvements put in actually cover the debt service. You have a year of construction and 18 months of, or 18 years of payback. We did one of these back about five, six, seven years ago, and it's been very successful. We think there are opportunities to do more improvements, which.
So move?
No, no.
Okay. Let's, let's let her.
And these improvements will improve the efficiency, energy conservation, and the general aesthetics within our building for staff.
I'm not against it, it's good, but I was just wanted to ask a question. I, do, does any of that money that you're naming there come back to the county in, as a fund balance or anything else? Or how does it, how do we, how does, you got all this hundreds of thousands of dollars, but when do we get it, or do we get it or we don't have to pay it?
No, sir, we borrow, we borrow the money, and then the savings that you enjoy from making the improvements, those savings pay the debt payments on the money that you borrowed to do the actual work in the buildings.
And we've done it up to, how much, what was our total on that last project?
The one we did before was in the two and a half million dollar range.
And we got that money back?
Every year in energy savings, the savings, the costs that you aren't having to pay out make the debt service payment.
So you keep up with that?
Yes, sir, we have an audit every year, and there's a guarantee in place, and if at the point in time your savings don't cover your debt service, the energy contractor, Siemens, is on the hook to make your debt service.
Right, I know it is, and I'm not, as I said, I think it's good, so I'm not, but I just wanted to.
I think it's important to note that even on the first project, that the energy savings far exceeded what was projected, so not only were we able to make, meet debt payments on the 12-year note for all the improvements, we actually technically did, could have received allocations back to fund balance because we spent less than utility costs. So if we can do that a second time around, I mean, it's, it's a good deal for us, and it's guaranteed, like, like Melanie said, they don't meet the benchmarks, Siemens is on tap to pay for the, the difference in debt, debt payments.
Yeah, I, I'm one of those, everybody else probably understands it, but I just don't understand all of it.
Well, the, and the other thing I want.
I'm glad they do, too.
Want you to know is on July 9, we will be back because we will get proposals from the different lending institutions, it may be a conventional bank, it may be a different type of lender, to actually do the financing for us, and you will have to accept someone's bid at its, you know, at an interest rate. And so don't be surprised when I'm back on July 9 to ask you to award the financing to someone.
Okay, George. Let's vote, if there's no other comments. Okay, that passes. Our next item, our, our appointment or reappointment to the Pitt County ABC Board.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to nominate Glenn Webb.
Okay, is there a second to that?
I like.
We don't have to have a second.
Okay, we don't have to have a second. Is there another nomination?
Yes, I'd like to, reappointment of Steve Little.
Okay, we have two nominations.
Madam Chair, I concur with Commissioner James in that, that we appoint Mr. Little in that he has been very receptive to meeting our needs of this board. Very cordial, and I certainly like to.
Okay, Madam Attorney, we vote in reverse order, correct? Oh, comment, I'm sorry, Mr. Owens.
You know, we, we're right back to where we were when we were having problems with the ABC Board, and things seem to resolve that as it was. And out of all respect for Melvin, I did not vote for Melvin because I had a feeling that if he served on the Board of Commissioners, which is a board that's making appointments to somewhere else, that that was a little out of kilter for me personally, but like Dr. Massey said, that was just me personally, but, and I'm not gonna vote for Glenn because of that reason.
Okay, so anybody else, time for comment? Okay, we will vote in reverse order, Steve Little first.
He's on the board now, isn't he?
Yes, sir.
You'll need five votes to pass, so that, that does not pass.
Okay. So do we vote, go to the next one?
Then go to the next one.
Okay, then the next one is Glenn Webb for the ABC Board. Mr. James?
Oh, I voted.
That passes.
That passes. Okay, thank you, Mr. Webb, for agreeing to serve. Okay, we're at the end. Commissioners' comments, starting with Mr. Owens?
One comment I make is, I wished it was something that somebody with some power and some money could do for the Medical Center in Bethel and Mr. James's area. It's, it's a situation that I know we got a lot undercurrent now and not sufficient funds to do that, but that, that would be a great service.
Thank you, Mr. Owens. Mr. Hammond?
Madam Chairman.
Yes, I'm coming on around, Mr. Hammond?
I got a report tonight from Miss Rebecca, who's in charge of, of Pitt Transit. She was the one that brought me, she, she was the driver of the van tonight, oh, she had a lot of people out, and I, this is her second time doing that as department head. Whenever she don't have anyone to send and trip has to be made, she does it, and I want to commend her for that and thank her and let you know that. She told me they have, they have a meeting with Brody School of Medicine tomorrow morning where this is going to be discussed, tomorrow morning.
Okay, Mr. James?
I agree with Commissioner Owens that we, this board needs to take some action. We need to meet with the hospital, whoever is there. I think that the hospital is the one that needs to really take over. The building belongs to the Brody School of Medicine, the one across the railroad belongs to the Brody School of Medicine, but I'm sure that they would be glad. I would hope to give it to the hospital. The hospital is building a big, Edgecombe is building a big family practice center in Pine Tops, and if they can build one in another county, they can certainly operate this one. And we're not talking about losing money. We got a lot of senior citizens in that particular era, and that we need to, Mr. Manager, to take some action to help those people out, we really do. And I, I like Commissioner Owens, I think this board, somebody needs, we don't need to come up with the money because hospitals, they've got plenty of money, they made 45, 49 million dollars, I think, last year.
Would you like staff to develop a resolution that we could pass on to the Brody School of Medicine and the Medical Center?
And the hospital.
Yeah.
To get together.
Well, we, whatever you think, but I think we'd have to send it to the Brody School of Medicine that's there.
That's what I've.
They're in charge of it, would be what I would recommend, and then I'm, we could say in there something relevant to that.
I was informed by Ms. Clayton, Mrs. Ward, that the only answer she has to give anyone is, who gonna pay for the service, and it is not a individual service that's run like a cow, where some go at eight, some at nine, some at 10, some at 11, she can't do that, she said, but she, she's hopeful that if they make out a time schedule for, for, for patients' departures and whatnot, that they'll be able to accommodate if they are given the permission.
Okay, thank you.
But, see, we need to know more about it, they need to be open. See patients the entire week, now it's not doing that, and that there's a lot, I go to the family practice center there in Bethel, and it's good.
Okay, so we, do we need to vote on the resolution? So if, vote, please, if you're in favor.
Second, Madam Chair.
Second, okay. I thought I did, I'm sorry, but thank you.
If the board will give me the latitude to develop the resolution, I'll run it by the chair, then we'll, we'll distribute it out to the board.
Okay.
It needs to be done fast.
The resolution is what?
It needs to be done fast.
To the Brody School of Medicine that we support, whatever they can do to.
Maintain.
Keep the Bethel clinic open.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. James, will you vote?
Yes, I'm sure you will.
Thank you very much. Okay, now, Commissioners' comments? Commissioners' comments?
I, I wanted Mr. Webb to report on what he and I learned in Raleigh today at two State Association Commission meetings. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And Mr. McGlaughlin?
Mark, I think you fail to realize that I also represent Bethel, and I've received many, many comments from, from the citizens of Bethel and in reference to keeping the clinic open. And I think it's right to do what we've just done, to pass this resolution, and I just wanted to let Mark know that I, I continue to represent Bethel, so.
You laughed at me, so I thought you had deserted me, Mel.
You made that comment several times in the past, so I just wanted to make sure you, you understand that I represent Bethel. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And we all represent all of Pitt County.
I hope we do.
Yes. Okay, Mr. Webb?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, and I agree with Mr. McLaughlin, Mr. Owens, and Mr. James. We already have a food desert north of the river, we don't need a medical service desert as well. Just to give the report that Dr. Johnson mentioned, we attended the Intergovernmental Relations Committee meeting and the Justice and Public Safety Committee meetings for the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners today. There was a lot discussed in the, in the time that we were there. The two big things, for intergovernmental, the big thing was fracking and the state taking into consideration the ability to engage in, in fracking, to basically mine natural gas. It's a method in which wells are dug and then water is shot in at a very high velocity using several chemicals to help with the fracturing of the ground and then collecting the natural gas. It wouldn't be a huge effect on the east as far as we could tell, most of it lies well to the west of us. Our engagement with it would be if there was any environmental fallout to it, and we're waiting on more studies and really just more knowledge on it before we could take a position on it. It doesn't seem by the estimations, though, that it would be anything that would be profitable for the east or the state in general, based on the estimations of only about five years worth of supply there. For justice and public safety, this is something I would suggest that we all contact our legislative team on. Currently, there's a bill in the, in committee that would eliminate all pre-trial release programs, which would really negatively affect our abilities in pre-trial release. It's basically being pushed by the Bondsman and a group of them with a lobbyist to get this through, and it would negate our tracking after, from release, and this is some revenue we receive from this, but it also frees up space in the jail to allow us other options there as far as housing. And they gave a very nice words about Sheriff Phelps in the presentation. as far as housing. And they gave a very nice words about Sheriff Phelps in the presentation he gave in Raleigh about this, and how important it is to our county, as well as thirty other counties that participate in pre-trial release programs. And just because, and that's only a third of the counties, however, a lot of counties that don't have the program also use other counties' programs. So this is something that's going on in more than just thirty counties. And if this is defeated, then, or if this succeeds, I'm sorry, we'll lose our pre-trial options. And with our pre-trial options, we can at least track the offenders. When you talk about the GPS monitoring, if they're just paying a bail bondsman, which they don't always pay the full fee. Sometimes they agree to a payment plan, and they don't always pay that, and they, they go on the run. At least then we would have some control over it. And those were the two big items. And one last thing, and I'm sorry for keeping us, just like everybody keep our MP unit out of Winterville in their prayers tonight, they ship out, or they shipped out for Fort Bliss today for a few months of training before going to Afghanistan. Commissioner Garrison and I attended their deployment ceremony. And I'd broached this with the manager about having a Pitt County flag sent to them to fly over their base. They're allowed to fly their state flag and other flags where they'll be. And I think the cost was a hundred dollars, and we had mentioned how to come up with that, maybe contingency. But what I decided was, is I think it would be more special to our service people if the community purchased it. And so I'm gonna seek a hundred people to donate one dollar so that we can buy a flag to send to them. And I talked to their captain yesterday about it, and he thought that would be a nice thing. So I'll go out and find a hundred bucks, and, and we'll get that flag bought. And when it returns to us in a year, it can be displayed somewhere in the county building, and that, a case for that might be a good project for an Eagle Scout to construct a case fort and a, something to note in where it was. But that's all I have. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, you might want to consider asking the Commissioners one-on-one also, if they'd like to donate. Okay, we come to the end. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Move.
Let's vote, please, and we do need it. Mr. James, thank you.
Thank you, Lord. Oh, my goodness. I gotta love my motel.
I heard that one was. The one over here is this Siemens guy.
Oh, yeah, not him, but I missed.
I didn't know that.